Good evening.
Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of March 23, 2023. Welcome. Will we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do the roll call. Mr. Phil Nemecak?
Present.
Mr. Anthony Giacobi?
Present.
Jim Bonano's here. Mr. Lewis Campana?
Present.
And Mr. Mark Cunningham will not be here tonight. Let's just do some housekeeping here. We're going to vote on the minutes of January 26, the approval, 2023, and we all can vote on them, except myself, because I wasn't here. So, subject to the corrections made by Mr. Phil Nemecak, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 26, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same thing for February 20.
I have not had the opportunity. I've reviewed half of the, I reviewed the Beach Street application, but I didn't get past that, so I'll provide those shortly.
We're not going to do those, then?
No, we can do those.
So then, I'd just like to note that one application has been adjourned to April 27 and will not be heard, and that is the application 21-17, 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision. So, tonight, just so everyone knows, we are here to talk about the Beach Street subdivision, the Ray Place project. There's an application for Wood and Fire and Five Nancy Place and 16 Graystone Circle, in that order. So, we'll start with the first, application 23-02, Beach Street subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Smith, Principal of Planning and Development Advisors. We're planning consultants to the applicant for Vlasin LLC. Joining me tonight is Bashkom Kukai behind. I got that name correct?
Yep.
Yep, there you go. Thank you. Brian Dempsey from PDE Providence Engineers and Dan Collier from Hudson Engineers. I have a presentation that I'd like to, yep, that we'll go through. We had a little bit of some technical difficulties earlier, but I think we'll get through those. Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, it was requested that we provide some more simplified graphics to illustrate the proposed project. So, that's essentially what we'll be going through, a lot of the same information. And then, also, since we last met, we had an opportunity to get a determination from your Director of Building and Planning regarding proposed Lot Number Four with respect to the rear lot line designation. And so, that's been reflected, and we'll present that. And we also had an opportunity to meet with town staff, Police Department, Fire, your Building Department, your Planning Director, and Highway Department. So, some of those comments have been reflected in the updated plans as well. So... Or the public, the, this is the project site outlined in black. There we go. Okay, which is, I don't know if the cursor's working, but essentially, you see the black outline. To the north is Highland Avenue. To the south here is Beach Street. The property is approximately 1.81 acres. We have a, superimposed on the aerial is a proposed layout for the subdivision, calls for eight lots, eight zoning compliant lots, and we'll get into that in a little bit of detail. So, here is a graphic of the proposed layout, subdivision layout. Let me see if I can get the laser pointer to work. Well, my laser pointer's not working, but regardless. So, to the, the right of the screen, just to the north of the proposed cul-de-sac is Lot, is Proposed Lot Number One. That would have direct access to Beach Street. Lots Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six surround the proposed cul-de-sac. There's a, a non-buildable lot that's located just to the bottom portion of the cul-de-sac. That'll be used for stormwater management purposes. And then, we have Proposed Lots Seven and Eight, which front on Highland Avenue. They would have direct access off of Highland Avenue. So, for the proposed cul-de-sac, we would have five homes accessing the cul-de-sac going out to Beach Street. So, the next graphic, again, as requested, we have provided a layout of how, conceptually, a driveway and a home location with patio and supporting amenities could be accommodated on each lot. And then, just to reiterate, when we're looking at this from, again, from, as I'm looking at this from a planner's standpoint, these are zoning compliant lots. The lots are, for the most part, in R5 or an R6 district. These are single-family homes, next to single-family homes. The red circles indicate, in proximity to the subject site, where there are other comparable cul-de-sacs, which have similar types of layouts and similar numbers of single-family homes. There are, there was, I think, a comment made about some of the, a couple of the cul-de-sacs located in the far left to the graphic, which were actually in the village of Tuckahoe, and we've eliminated those. But regardless, there are, at least in this graphic, there are 11 different cul-de-sacs proximate to the, to the project site. We've identified those previously. I won't go through those again. But I think it's important to note, there was a comment raised, or there was a, one of the conditions that we're seeking as far as a variance is the separation, the offset separation between the proposed cul-de-sac and Siwanoye Boulevard. And I would just note that, just a quick survey, that there are, at least, you know, out of the identified cul-de-sacs, there are at least four. Dean Place to Duluth, which is approximately 137 feet. Caldwell to Brother Circles, 57 feet. Hickory Hill Road, South to North, is approximately 64 feet. New York Place to Pine Circles, 37 feet. So, that, that provides at least some indication that, that, and Mr. Dempsey will go into a little bit more detail on his traffic responses, about kind of the orientation of cul-de-sacs to, through traffic. So, the next graphic that we prepared provides in more detail the proposed variance requested, and there are two. The first, as I had mentioned, is this separation between intersections. At the top of the graphic is Siwanoye Boulevard. And then, to the middle of the proposed cul-de-sac is approximately 108 feet. And the zoning requirement is 150 feet. So, that would be one of the variances that would be requested as part of this application. Now, the second variance is for, it's, it's a 12-foot radius at the, essentially at the street line where the property line meets the, the right-of-way. And if you'll notice, at the, the bottom of the, the graphic, there's a small semicircle. It's approximately 31 square feet. That's the variance request that's being asked for. And you'll notice, just to the, the top part of the, the proposed cul-de-sac, that's where that, you'll see that, that radius, that 12-foot radius. So, and again, I apologize. I don't know why the laser pointer's, but essentially, that's, those are the, that, those are the two proposed variances that are being requested as part of the proposed action. And as I indicated in my opening remarks, we got a determination from the Director of Building and Planning regarding Proposed Lot Number Four, and which, and there was some discussion about which lot was going to be the, the rear lot line. And the graphic on the right indicates that the, based on that determination, that the rear lot line would be on the, the easternmost lot line. So, that's essentially at the top of the, of the graphic. So, the, the other discussion that we had, at least in, as part of the public comments and then with the meeting with town staff, related to on-street parking, and there was a lot of discussion. So, we've prepared a graph, a couple, couple of graphics that indicate the on-street parking considerations. So, on, what we've, what we've done is we've illustrated the, what we think is the maximum number of on-street parking that could be accommodated between, essentially, the, the dead end, which is at the right of the page, east of Siwanoye Boulevard, extending all the way to the west to Rose Avenue. And essentially, we've tried to identify that the, the maximum number of on-street parking spaces would be 19 spaces. So, what we've done is, we've added the proposed cul-de-sac, and then, we had to eliminate five of those on-street parking spaces that were identified previously. And that, and that was done in, in coordination with, with this meeting with town officials. So, we went from 19, subtract five, and then, by creating the, the new cul-de-sac, we're able to accommodate six new on-street parking spaces. So, the, the on-street resource goes essentially from 19 previously to the 20 in the proposed condition. And the, the six on-street parking spaces on the proposed cul-de-sac were coordinated and reviewed with the Fire Department, so that they could get a, the largest of their apparatus into the cul-de-sac. They could make the turning radius at, through the, the end of the cul-de-sac and then come back out. And the, the last slide that I have before, I'll ask Mr. Dempsey to come up, there was a comment about visitor parking. And so, what the, the graphic here illustrates that each of the proposed homes, each of the lots, has a proposed garage. And then, they have off-street parking in the driveways. And, and we can accommodate anywhere between six to eight parking, you know, vehicles in the driveways and the garages for each of the lots. And we think that that adequately accommodates any need for visitor parking beyond what may be available on-street. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my portion of the initial presentation. I'll ask Mr. Dempsey to come up and just provide a quick overview of the comments that were raised by your own traffic consultant and our response.
Sure. Before you do that, just to be clear, could you just go back to the two variances, the one with the radius? Could you explain that in a little more detail? Because I think I understand it, but I don't understand the graphic.
Okay. So, if you look at the graphic, to the, the top of the proposed cul-de-sac, you'll see where the, the, the line curves as it meets the, the right-of-way.
Yep.
You're supposed to have a comparable curve on the property to the, or the property line to the south. And you see where it's dashed?
Yes.
So, that, that's, that's the variance that's being requested. And because of the configuration of the, the land area, we can't accommodate that with the proposed design of the cul-de-sac. So, what we would be asking for is a variance, and that, and again, it's approximately 31 square feet in area for that, that, that small radius. So, and I, and again, I think we've all struggled with figuring out, trying to figure out, well, you know, why is it there? And I, and I'd be happy if somebody could provide a response. But my conclusion is that it's there because, as the road begins to flare out and meet the, the, the existing street, the right-of-way extends and curves out as well. And so, there isn't, because the, the land area, essentially, that, that small area that we're asking for variance is not on our property.
Okay. Right. So, perhaps if the property was 12 feet wider at that point, a variance would not be requested?
That's correct. Yeah, I don't know if it's exactly 12 feet wide. It's, it's a 12-foot radius. So, whatever the...
Right, 12-foot radius.
You're right, whatever the...
But it looks like what you needed for is to maintain the 10-foot buffer on either side of that 30-foot
Right, correct.
street, road.
Yes.
Right, shy. Okay.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. So, I'll ask Mr. Dempsey to come up. Very good. Which, you want a graphic? How's that?
Good evening. Brian Dempsey, Licensed PE from the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. Just following up, we had submitted two response memos to the, to the town that responded to the questions that came up at the last hearing and from the town's traffic consultant. Since then, we've received some more comments from some members of the public. So, I'm just going to try to go through a couple of them, the traffic-related ones. As Dave said, we did have a meeting with the Police Department, Fire Department, Highway Superintendent, and other representatives, as well as the town's traffic consultant and the town's civil engineer. So, a lot got accomplished with that. But just a couple of emails that were received by the town that were forwarded to us. Had a couple of comments. One was, again, about the traffic count on the Monday afternoon. We discussed this last hearing, but at the request of the, or recommendation of the town's traffic consultant, we did another count on a Wednesday afternoon, on a sunny day. And the actual, first day we did it, which was that Monday afternoon at the one location, is actually a higher traffic count. So, our traffic study is conservative. We showed higher volumes at the intersection of Highland and Beach, which is the one location that had been counted on the Monday. So, in that regard, there's no issue there. Also, at the request of the town's traffic consultant, he had us do some supplemental counts at some of the cul-de-sacs in the area, just to compare the trip generation compared to what we use. We use the ITE trip generation rates, which is the standard. And the other cul-de-sacs had similar numbers or less numbers than what we use. So, again, our traffic study was conservative. Another issue that came up was the school hours for the Tuckahoe schools. We did a, we had conversations with the school district. Also, the information's on their website. There was comments made that school gets out at 1:20 or 1:30, which does not happen. The school, the high school and middle school both go to 2:30 for the last bell, and kids are going back to lockers and everything. So, we confirmed that. And it's also on their website, the hours for the school district. And the elementary school, you could start, parents could start lining up at 2:45 to pick up the kids, but they get out essentially at 3 o'clock. But just to be conservative, and also based on discussions with the town's traffic consultant, we did counts starting at 1:30 at Beach and Siwanoye. And what we had in the traffic study were the higher numbers and the correct peak hours. So, and we're going through this with the town's, the results with the town's traffic consultant on that. Crash history, we had provided the crash history in the, in the traffic study. We were asked to double-check this with the, with the town Police Department. Lieutenant Graff sent a message to, to Margaret and myself, and her comment quote was, "There are no state accident reports through this time period of March 16, 2020 to March 16, 2023 in this area." That doesn't mean, there could have been an accident that didn't get reported, or some minor thing that didn't, didn't get recorded by the Police Department, but they have no recorded accidents in that area during that time period. That pretty much is what the state also had. So, the numbers, they both match up. Dave talked about the center line issue. And as he said, there's various locations within the town that have cul-de-sacs or two streets that are less than 150 feet apart. Brother Circles to Caldwell Street along Tuckahoe Avenue is only 53 feet apart. Stevens Avenue, East and West, I know the one, the west portion is officially in Tuckahoe, but that is, that's 88 feet apart. And there's various other examples throughout, throughout the town. One of the things that was talked about with that, and Mr. Grilly explained, and I looked through why it's not an issue here, based upon the traffic volumes, the speeds and such. We did talk to the Police Department about that, and one of the comments was, "Could a stop sign be added at the stem of the, the dead end portion of Beach Street?" The police did know, and saw a stop sign there because it's only the three houses. They're not traveling at a high speed. And if you put a stop sign in, state law is, there's no parking within 30 feet of a stop sign. So, they would lose some of the parking there. So, their preference was not to add a stop sign in that direction. Parking event on south side of Beach Street. This was an issue based on a note on one of the site plans. The, what the Fire Department has asked us to do is have no parking on the south side of Beach Street, just stops at the new roadway into the cul-de-sac, just for their, because of their fire apparatus, so just for that one stretch. We did go over with the police about whether parking on the south side is legal, because when you come off Highland, there's no parking anytime signs with arrows in direct, both directions. There are a few of them. And then, there's another one at Rose, pointing with the arrow in both directions. There is, there used to be, and two years ago at least, there was a, a sign on the stop sign also saying, a sign at Siwanoye, also saying, "No parking in either, in neither direction on the south side." And there's also one on the dead-end sign for the last stub. The one that was on the stop sign is no longer there. But the one from Rose pointing in this direction, there is no space, place where it says parking can be done again. The police also mentioned, "There's no parking on the curve in the other direction between houses 187 and 193." However, there are no signs out there that, that indicate that, but that's in the town code. The, and then, with, Dave talked about the parking on-site. That was the other issue. There's going to be six public parking spaces that anybody can use along the stretch. We had seven there, but the Fire Department asked us to eliminate one. And then, there's ample parking in the driveways and garages of each of the houses. And any questions?
Guys?
I believe Mr. Smith mentioned that each of the, the proposed houses would have a garage and a capacity for off-street parking for between six and eight cars? Is, is that based on a two-car garage?
That includes the garage.
All right, that includes the garage.
That includes the garage, cars that park in the garage.
Yeah, that, just to clarify, that's, in the event that the applicant has a garage for each of the units, that would be a two-car garage. And then, the, the drawings indicate that you can get at least four, four parking spaces in the driveways. In some cases, because the driveway's a little bit longer, you can get six. So, it, again, the code requires at least two parking spaces, off-street parking spaces per unit, so we more than meet the, the zoning requirements.
Okay, good.
The additional day you did traffic counts, you said, was it Wednesday?
Um, we did a few.
What, you just did one day? Yeah.
We did a few of them. Wednesday, March 8th was, was one of them.
Hours?
What?
Hours.
That one was the same hours as the traffic count, so that was three to six. But then, we did another one this Tuesday from 1:30 to 6 o'clock.
Are those the same hours that you had done the other studies?
Well, the original one was three to six.
Three to six, okay.
Three to 6:30, whatever. And then, at the direction of Mr. Grilly, we did, we started a new one, did it from 1:30 on. It was clear weather, sunny, everything.
Okay. And, and I, I know you mentioned that the one that, I believe it was the one that you had done on the Wednesday, actually showed less traffic than the one you originally did. What about the one that you most recently did?
Same thing, and the numbers were very similar.
Okay.
The one, when, the one that we had done on that Wednesday, March 8th, was done at the intersection of Highland and Beach, because that was the one intersection we had counted on the Monday. And a member of the public had questioned it being done on a Monday afternoon, and that it was raining out. So, but as, again, those numbers ended up being higher than, than this one.
Yeah, okay. And, and if I could also ask you to clarify, because I guess I was, lost your, lost the train of thought on the question of whether parking was permitted. You said that there were signs that indicated there was no parking in that. What was the conclusion that you drew with respect to the parking on that one side of Beach Street? And what segment of is that?
We're, we're not sure. What the, the police feel that you can park there. The way the signage is, is a little different than, than that. And, because the first comment was about, because when this was, project was started, that other sign existed, and so
Okay, well, I...
That was mentioned on the...
I'm going to give you some free advice here. I, I wouldn't scratch that scab very, very hard, because I think the last thing you want to do is to tell people who've been parking there for a while that they no longer can park there.
That's right.
Free advice!
I said, the police said they can park there.
Okay, good.
I just want to say, Lieutenant Graff mentioned to me a number of times that parking is technically permitted on both sides of the road.
Okay, good.
So, when you do counts, it's every vehicle that passes, be it a long truck, a school bus, or a car, right? There's no...
And we separate out the heavy vehicles, the buses, and we count those numbers also. You know...
Oh, you do separate them out, but...
Yeah, they're in the total count, but they're also, on this one, we, we kept track of those numbers.
Is there a way to characterize different types of vehicles in the count?
Sorry.
Is there a way to characterize the different types of vehicles in it, or it's just...
Yeah, you, um...
Like bus heavier?
For accounts, you do heavy vehicles, which would include trucks and buses. But here, there's not that many vehicles, so we individually counted the buses. And there were a couple SU30s, which are single unit trucks, box trucks.
Is that in your report? Is that...
There was, there was mention in the, in the report about the bus, buses and such, yes.
And the, both of those most recent studies, March 8th and whatever the other date was, those were both on dates when school was in session, right?
Yeah, school was, school was in session. The weather was good.
Okay, good.
So, before we move on, could I request something of you? Because your report is good. There's a lot of information in there, but it's not something that someone's going to sift through. We're taking a word for it, and I'm sure it's trustworthy. But is there some way you could give us some graphics about what's in there? Like, we're kind of visual here. We have drawings and stuff like that. Right now, it's just up to, is there some way you could put, like, a, a map together with all of the turns and what the rates are, and something that could sort of summarize it for the...
There are figures there showing what all the...
Yeah, I... Yeah, I.
The traffic volumes are and such.
I understand, but something that sort of doesn't force me to go into your report and seach them out.
We can, yeah.
Just not for me, but for the public to understand this, because I, somehow your consult, our consultant, if he agrees with you, I sort of defer to him in most cases, but this is your opportunity to convince us without him that everything is good, and the public too. So anything you could put together, we appreciate it.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Something with lots of colors and pictures. Thank you. That's all my comments, unless someone else has some?
The chairman also likes unicorns, if you can put them in.
Short attention span. Okay, we're, we're good if, uh, if you're complete, thank you. Do you have anyone else presenting?
No, just have any additional questions you have that I could respond to, or?
Sure, you mentioned.
Have to turn it over to the public.
You mentioned something about the parking, nineteen cars.
Yep.
And those nineteen cars are all on the north side?
Yes.
Of Beach?
Yes.
Was there any, like, study on how many cars are there on a normal day or night when it's allowed?
We, we did not do a survey of on-street parking. The, what we did do, though, is we looked at different configurations of how you could accommodate as much part, on-street parking as you could, and by having all the parking on the north side, that was the most on-street parking that you could get in that, based on that configuration, while allow, still allowing free-flowing traffic on Beach Street. So we, we took that as kind of the worst, the worst or the best case, that that's the parking resource within that stretch, and so that's what we evaluated as part of the, the analysis.
Okay, and so it's nineteen cars, north side, south side of Beach?
We, we left the south side open. If you had parking on both sides, then you start, you go from nineteen to, I forget, sixteen or eighteen parking spaces, if you, because now you've got to kind of maneuver in and out as you're going through that stretch. So we looked at it as kind of the, the best or the worst cases, the maximum number that you could get there. We could certainly provide an additional analysis that, that shows if you had parking on both sides, how would that affect the total number of parking spaces, but it would be less than the nineteen that we, we've shown and illustrated on the graphic, and that's why we wanted to show kind of the, the best or the worst case of the parking resources.
Okay, thanks.
Can you quickly go to the map that shows the school district line? I think it was in red, if I'm not mistaken. Okay.
Yes, so.
So the red line is the school district line, correct?
That's correct, right.
So it looks like Lot One is in the Tocco School District, Lot Two through Eight are in the East Chester School District?
That's correct.
All right. And then the, the line takes a jog through the rear yards of the homes that are on the street. Is that also Beach Street, or is, I'm sorry?
That is, that, the blue line is actually?
No, not the blue line, the, the school district line, as it jogs up towards the top of the page, it's in the rear yard of.
That's, that's essentially the, that's the Tocco School District, so everything kind of south of that, that red line is Tocco, everything to the north is East.
So the, so the, the five homes, two through six, right?
Two through eight.
Two, three, four, five, and six, which are in the cul-de-sac.
Yes. Yes.
Those homes, those properties would be serviced by the East Chester School District.
That's correct.
And the busing would then be coming through into Bronxville Manor, right?
Yes.
And then back out of Bronxville Manor.
Correct.
Is that shown in the traffic reports?
Wow.
The proposed.
Better Mr. Dempsey as to.
Well, what's in the traffic reports is how many existing buses that are going by there. Currently, there were three mini buses, one full-size bus. If the buses from East Chester School District do go here, there could be two in the morning, two in the afternoon, so it really wouldn't affect in terms of the traffic volumes that are in the traffic study. They may be mini buses, they, they might be large, the school, they won't know until, you know, they change every year in terms of what the patterns are, what size buses they're going to use, and it might be where they ask the residents to walk up further to Highland to where they're picking up some other people. That's another possibility also.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a lot of interest in that, a little summary, yeah, that's it.
Any more questions, guys, about the layout? I, I think, thank you, Mr. Dempsey, we've got it. Can, the next thing, can you explain the stormwater of the system? You may have done it last time, but we just want to understand what it is, what the runoff is, how it's retained?
I, I think a lot of residents were concerned about that, so, sort of a summary of how the storm water management system is designed and will function.
Mm-hmm. If you have a contour map or something, just to explain the grades.
So this is from an, uh, one of the earlier graphics, it actually shows, this shows the zoning line and the school district line, but it also has some of the, the stormwater features. I'm, I'm going to ask a, an expert on stormwater, just to, Dan Collins, just to kind of quickly walk through the stormwater management practices.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering, the stormwater engineer for the project. Essentially, just to give a brief overview, the proposed cul-de-sac and associated, and some uphill tributary areas from one ninety-five, I forget what it was, to the, the residents in the backyard for the property that's just to the, I guess, to the west, actually the bottom of the page. That flows overland onto the cul-de-sac. There's a series of catch basins within the cul-de-sacs that actually captures and conveys the runoff, first through what we call a hydromagnetic separator, which pretreats the runoff, the entire water quality volume as required by the state. From that, that pretreated runoff goes into a subsurface attenuation gallery. Basically, this is an underground tank, boxed tank, that stores the water and controls the flows to be less than what is coming off the property now. So essentially, that runoff from that subsurface tank is controlled by an outlet control structure, which slows those flows down. That dis- slow-bound flows, the controlled flows are then discharged to a, what we call a, it's an upflow filter, it's a, it's a cartridge, so basically it treats the rest of the water quality volume, takes anything else out, before following that pipe that you could see running to the north, I guess, to the left on the plan, that kinds of comes across, it goes on an angle, and then goes between lots five, six, seven, and eight in the middle. From there, it ends at a catch basin in Highland Avenue, where it then goes to the west, down the hill on Highland, to another proposed catch basin that we're putting in Highland Avenue, and then it's going to cut straight across Highland to the existing pipe within Highland Avenue. That's been sized per D C standards to treat the, to store and control the flows for the one, I think I actually did it for all of them, one, two, five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred-year storm event. So that covers everything across the board, as well as to obviously treat the runoff from the, from the tributary area. For each individual residence, what we tried to do is we did percolation and deep tests, what that is, we basically dig holes into the ground to figure out where the ledge rock and groundwater is, or where the, the highlet water elevation is by modeling. When we also do percolation tests at the depth that would be the, about the bottom of each system on the properties, on each individual lot, to show how well the soil absorbs the water and percolates the water into the surrounding soils. We actually got very good results on most of the lots, and we were actually able to provide subsurface drywells on the front and the rear yards of each individual lot. What we did for the coverage on each lot, we actually maximized it out, so each lot shows the maximum building and patio impervious area and driveway impervious area that can be possibly built on each lot. So all the systems on each individual lot have been sized to the maximum extent, and they've all been also sized for the one-hundred-year storm event, which is about a nine-inch storm over twenty-four hours. So with all in all, we're actually able to reduce all the flows for, from the entire site over what currently exists now.
What would the maximum impervious, is that what you said?
Yes.
What would that mean, just every?
The maximum impervious area is basically, in the town code, there's impervious coverage, maximum for each lot allowed.
That's what you used.
So that's what we ended up doing, so we ended up maxing it out per code, so that every, the maximum amount you could possibly build on each lot is covered.
Just in general, is there a grade, like, if you were to look at that, go back to that site map, do you, what are, is it, if you were to look at a, a contour map of the grades, is there some sort of general slope to the property?
Essentially, there's a small, I guess, you can call it a ridge line, to the, I guess, the right side of the sheet, that would basically run across the front yard of two oh-three Beach. The front yard of, front of, yard of two oh-three Beach, the original house, basically Lot One, would go towards Beach Street. The rest of the property generally flows overland in a, I guess, a northeasterly direction, where it towards Highland Avenue, where it eventually enters, gets to Highland Avenue.
And what do you think the difference in elevation is across the site?
Um, I'd have to look at it, hold on a second. Actually, I can't see it on here. Let's see, there's. Twenty feet?
Yeah, it looks about eighteen feet.
All right.
Yeah.
It's on the map.
Yeah.
It's eighteen feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eighteen, twenty.
The highest spot is towards the southwest and the lower.
The highest spot on the property is basically where the attenuation gallery is, that system on the non-building lot, that corner is the highest point, and then everything basically flows from that corner to basically the rear of Lot Four, which is the opposite corner.
Got it.
And that eventually gets down to Highland Avenue.
Right. If it were to flow freely across and not be stopped by the lots, right, and not be sta, and not be, if it were to flow freely across the lot and not be stopped by all the, all the impervious surface and picked up in the.
For, what, the, currently it flows freely, yes. There's no drainage on the site. I think there is maybe one drain inlet at the.
Right, but there will be, everyone will have all the cul-de-sacs and drywells, and it'll pick up a lot of that water.
So basically, yeah, all those individual lots, those, those areas are basically coming offline, getting put back into the ground, so those areas are taken off.
Right, so when they're done, it's way better than what's there, because a lot of the water's being stopped.
Yes.
In those drywells. Okay, point taken. Okay, thank you. I think we're going to break to our consultants now. We're going to speak with our, our consultants now, or let them come up, since we're talking about stormwater, you're up first.
Good evening, Joe Chremelli from Keller Sessions Consulting. As you know, we've reviewed several iterations of this plan to date, had a number of staff meetings with the East Chester Fire Department, Highway Department, Planning Department. The applicant's done a, has addressed a number of our prior comments, actually a majority of them to this point. As you know, aside from any approvals from the town, they will require Health Department approval for the subdivision, as well as for the extensions to the sanitary sewer and water mains to serve the project. They'll also require approval from Veolia Water for the water main extension that's proposed to serve. And with regards to stormwater, not only do they need to comply with the town's local regulations, but they'll need to comply with the New York State D E C for stormwater compliance under their general permit, and we've reviewed the SWIP that they've prepared in order to meet that compliance. And aside from some, I, I would consider minor technical comments at this point, they've generally complied with those regulations. We've seen a draft of their notice of intent that would be filed with the state and are in agreement with the, the preparation of that document. We do have some, as I said, some minor comments, I guess, specific to, to the point you just made, Mr. Chairman, with regard to overland flow. In the proposed condition, as was mentioned, everything from the proposed cul-de-sac will be captured, treated, detained, and then discharged to a physical connection to the town stormwater system on Highland Avenue. All of these stormwater runoff from the, each individual lot will be collected and detained in a, in an infiltration system, actually two infiltration systems on each lot, and those have been sized to mitigate through the hundred-year storm. So in theory, no runoff from those, the impervious surfaces from those lots will result from this subdivision. You'll still have runoff from the surrounding lawn areas, landscaped areas, but as far as the impervious surfaces go, that would all be collected. One, one comment, we do ask the applicant to look at, I believe on lots one, five, six, seven, and eight, all of the footing drains and any sump pumps from the basements have been connected to the proposed storm system. The footing drains for lots two, three, and four, which are the easternmost that border the downgradient property, we don't have a map, but the, as we were just discussing, the, the overland flow goes from the high point where that detention system is, basically diagonally across the site to the downgradient properties. Just to further protect those, those properties down, downgrade of the subdivision, we would ask that they consider, I think they have the elevation and the ability to collect those footing drains and put them into individual drywells on the property, just to further reduce that potential for any runoff from the site.
It's a good idea.
We still have some coordination to do with the Highway Department or the applicant, rather, with regard to street lighting, street trees for the cul-de-sac. They'll be providing both, we just need to determine quantities of both species of trees and, and size and whatnot, but they, they've obviously agreed to, to work with the Highway Department to do that. We've heard from the Fire Department, at this point, they are satisfied with the available emergency access for all of their apparatus that would serve this in the event of an emergency, and that largely dictated the proposed parking on the cul-de-sac to, to ensure that they had the adequate access. We did ask that they work with our office and the Highway Department, and Veolia Water for that matter, just to ensure that there is enough capacity in the sanitary sewer system and water supply to serve the project. I don't anticipate it to be a problem. We have had some conversations with the Highway Department. They've confirmed that they have no, there are no known issues with the sanitary sewer system in Beach Street and the surrounding neighborhood, to which a majority of the, the sanitary flow from this project would be discharged to. The two lots that would front Highland, there was a, I believe it was a three-family house on that property?
Yeah.
Which will now be replaced with two single-family, so that, that marginal increase in sanitary flow, again, I, I don't believe will be a problem, but we've asked the applicant to just do an analysis of the existing sanitary sewers in both, both systems, just to ensure that, and they've, they've agreed to provide that. We'll, we'll, yeah, obviously reserve comment until we receive that. I think that's it. Like I said, the other comments I have are relatively minor. There's just one, one point I want to, I think we'll need to discuss with the, the Highway Department. The storm system, the detention system, the discharge pipe from that system that runs through the lots of five, six, seven, and eight, was originally proposed to run down the center of the property lines that divided those lots, and we were concerned with future potential impact, neighbors wanting to put up fences and whatnot, and whether or not that would be a conflict with the pipe. I, I think in response to that, they shifted the pipe out of the way of that property line, but in doing so, they also shifted the easement so that it's fully on two of the lots, lots, I think it's five and eight, if I'm not mistaken, which puts the, the storm pipe pretty close to the, to the residents, and the easement is, it gets a little bit narrower, it's only nine feet, so I just want to make sure that the Highway Department, although this will be owned by the HOA, if there was a need in the future for someone to get into the property to maintain or repair that pipe, whether it be the HOA or the Highway Department, I just want to make sure that they, they feel that there's ample room to do that. So that, that may need some minor adjustments, but nothing that would rise to, you know, significant change to the plan.
Is there an overflow on the detention tank?
On the, each, each of the infiltration systems for the residential lots, there is.
Right, what about the?
The event that they were either clogged or, you know, some extraordinary storm.
Right, what about the one that picks up the stormwater from the street?
Right. Now, on the detention system itself, I believe those also have inspection ports, which would act. which would act as an emergency overflow. I don't, I don't recall offhand, Dan, I don't know if you know, if it got to that level of severity, whether the basins in the street and the proposed cul-de-sac would, would overflow as well. That I don't know, but it's, it's sized for a hundred-year storm, so if we were to get to that, we've got a pretty significant event going on.
Okay, just curious. All right. I don't have any questions?
Yeah, the, the catch basin, basin in the, I guess, the southwest side, the unbuildable lot, I think you mentioned there's a filter there for stormwater?
The, there's a filter prior, all the catch basins in the road, which would ultimately be owned by the town, are standard catch basins. Once that is collected and conveyed to the detention system, just prior to discharging to that detention system, there's a pre-treatment structure. It's a separator unit. That would be owned by the HOA. That treats the wa, pre-treats the water before it goes into, in the detention system, and then it's treated again as it exits before it goes down the, to Highland into the town system.
So who's responsible to make sure that doesn't clog up and back up?
The, the HOA is responsible in perpetuity. And there's, there'll be a deed restriction, there's a stormwater maintenance agreement between the HOA and the town that will be on record. And it ultimately gives the town the ability to go in there and inspect if need be, do repairs if need be, if it's neglected to be done by the HOA. Obviously, there's mechanisms to back charge and collect any fees that are required to do that.
Right.
But ultimately, it's the responsibility, the responsibility of the HOA.
Thank you, Mr. Chremeli.
Thank you.
Doctor?
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We had provided at the February meeting a quick synopsis of our review of the traffic study that was submitted to the town. We had several comments. Subsequent to that meeting, there was a resubmission from the applicant dated March 6th. That provided information on site distances that we had requested, information relative to dimensions of the different roadways, that was provided. There was also the meeting that was referenced, the March 10th meeting that we had with the police, fire, highway. And I think the synopsis that was provided by Mr. Smith, Mr. Dempsey, and Joe's comments, you know, captures everything that was discussed at that meeting. The, the Fire Department did indicate that there would be no parking permitted around the cul-de-sac circle itself, of course. The other items which Mr. Dempsey described tonight, the new counts that were collected, that has not been submitted yet. It's our understanding that they're going to submit that and also include responses to some of the comments that occurred, I guess, written comments that have come in. So we will review that once we receive that for its accuracy, but it sounds like that information confirms the accuracy and data that he used in the original study. I think when they make that submission, they can include some of the clarification that the board had tonight. So, for example, in the original report, there were graphics showing the turning movements as the chairman requested. I think in the new submission, just add to that and show the breakdown of passenger cars, the school buses, et cetera, to just make it easier. And the, in terms of the on-street parking, again, that was really driven by the highway and fire, to make sure that the vehicles could turn properly in and out of the cul-de-sac. And the plan that was presented, I think, represents the, you know, accurate future condition of what will be there in terms of on-street parking. So, once we receive the new information from the applicant, and I'm assuming he'll address whatever other comments come up tonight, we will review that and get a final memo back to the board. But at this point, they've, they've provided responses to our previous comments, and once we get the new information, we will review that and comment on it. And be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I think what I'm gonna say is more, what I'm gonna say is more of a statement than a question. So, in general, or you are our consultant, you work with us?
Correct.
And you're an expert in, in traffic and all of these matters. The relationship you have with Mr. Dempsey, it seems like listening to him, it's somewhat of a collaborative relationship? Do you guys work together to pick out a good day that, that you'll agree to?
Yeah, so he will provide the data that they've collected so we can review it. And yes, we will, you know, we work together in terms of reviewing other projects in the town or another town, so, yeah.
Right, but on this project, I'm saying, is the last, the first time you see the results, or at least even the days that he was gonna do additional counts, was that his decision or did you guys go through that together?
He chose the days, but we suggested that they do additional counts just to answer the questions that were raised. And I think, like, one of the counts was done this past Tuesday, good weather, you know, again, identifying to make sure we have good weather conditions, schools in, in, in session, but it was up to him to choose the specific day of the survey. But yeah, we, we make sure that the parameters, you know, cover the key aspects.
Just time. I don't have any other questions. You guys good?
Yep. I have one, actually. I'm just trying to think of my own neighborhood. I feel like the busiest time of day, in my neighborhood at least, similar neighborhood to this, is like in the morning hours.
Yep.
There was no study done during, you know, from 7:00 AM when people are going to work, and 9 o'clock during, when everybody's getting on the school buses, driving their kids to school. There is no study done during that period.
So, yes, they, they did evaluate both morning and afternoon. I forget whether it was, I know it was at least seven to nine that they studied. It may have been a little bit earlier, but yeah, they, they did identify and study the key peaks in terms of morning and commuters and schools. The issue that was raised was about when the schools let out in the afternoon, did they start early enough in the afternoon with their surveys? So, the, the new counts that they did was to capture anything that may have been missed in the original study.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greeley.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing the results. So, I think since we're done with the applicant and our consultants, we're gonna go back to the public hearing. So, before we start, just a couple of, little bit of housekeeping, please, anyone who would like to speak, you have to come up to this, to the mic, state your name and address, and then put your questions or comments forth. And then, we just wanna, if there's any questions you have, please address them to the board. We just don't want to get into you speaking with our consultants directly. So, I think we, maybe did that last time, we're gonna try and just keep it to the board. Then we'll talk to our consultants either today or in the future to try and address your questions. That being said, the mic is open.
This is the one sign? Okay. I'm Richard Slevankow, 200 Beach Street, and I'm the drop curb that's directly across from the easement or the variance that they want. I'm the only one, 31 feet, of which, yes, it's just a sliver, but it's a, a nice sloping line cutting into my neighbor Drew Clark's property, which happens to land the traffic right in front of my driveway. But that's not why I'm here to talk. Let's, I, I wanna come back to this traffic study. We have some new information, we have some, some clarification up, but there's a lot open here. So I'm gonna start with a little bit of review, and then it's gonna be some, some questions left over as well as some kind of conclusions. So, previously, there was Monday and Tuesday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. There's just the questions about times, we were just talking a moment ago. And there was a Tuesday and a Wednesday at 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So there's two studies of two time periods, so two time samples from two different time parts. Those time parts were done previously in a holiday period, just after Thanksgiving. And as mentioned, the Monday was done in, in, I would call violation of the best practices that are set up by the City Environmental Quality Review that they do in New York City, where I think they have a fair idea how to do it, which New York State actually refers too frequently in their rulings and, and comments, that you don't do it on Monday, you don't do it in inclement weather. The Monday, that Monday, the holiday, you don't do it in the holiday periods either. That Monday in a holiday period in inclement weather was done. So, anything referring back to the saying, well, it's still good, is, is suspect. They also use three days. We have two, two sets of days and incomplete days from the past. Now, we've added on 3/8, apparently, a Wednesday, we've added another three to six interval. So now, we finally do have three days, but they're from very different periods. And the reason they want three days is they want to establish what is a typical day like. So if I look at three days, I can say, oh, this one looks typical, that, you know, I'm in the testing business. When we do things, we typically do them in threes because we're looking for an outlier. So, if I have two that are fairly close, it's okay, that doesn't look right. And we can say, okay, this is representative data. We don't have, we, we're pulling pieces from all over here. Now, the new test data, as I mentioned, a Wednesday was only for that later day part. The gentleman has then added a test, he chose, not, the consultant chose, not in consultation with the consultant, he chose a day of this past Tuesday from 1:30 to 6:00 PM. Well, that does at least get a little bit earlier, but it doesn't correspond to anything else that has three or something, so we can see, is it representative? And number two is, it doesn't go back to an earlier time period. And what do I mean by that? For example, in the, the chairman asked about a visual study, and I think that's a very good point, because what, when you look at numbers on a paper, a lot of times it doesn't tell a story. When you see a kid running off the road because there's a UPS truck and a guy speeding that blew off the stop sign, which is a very common situation, that tells a story. The video that I provided is a traffic study which previously supplied, shows you how many harrowing experiences happened. Before we had new school buses, four. Before we talk about additional traffic, before we talk about additional flows of very close turning next to a crazy intersection, which nobody acknowledges, where two schools are dumping out of and feeding each day and all their parents that go with it. But in the study that I referenced, and I made comment of, without thinking about the part of day, just things I saw on that video, 50% of those events that I commented on initially were in periods not covered by the studies of three to six and seven to nine. And even in the new study, the one study from 1:30 to 6:00, there's, for example, in that comments from 11:34 and 24 seconds to 11:37 and 38 seconds, so a school bus plus a car and van passing closely as a minivan is being loaded on the street. How do you put that on a traffic count? Oh, two cars, two vehicles, doesn't, not the same thing. That's a 22-foot wide street that somebody was loading a minivan, I'm sure, was quite apprehensive about what was going on. There's another thing that was mentioned about the, the times of day, another thing from that same traffic study that is only captured in this one time sample of 3:21, that Tuesday, that was the, just done, at 2:52 to 2:52 and 53, or a 53-second interval, is a full-size school bus and two cars and a pedestrian that follows seconds later. This is going on a 22-foot wide road, coming right off of a turn, going right into another turn that's part of a T. It's, if this is, the reason this room is so full, and I'm sure it's not that full, and I've been here times, it's not anywhere in this room, is we all know, raise your hand if you think that road is dangerous as it is. You gonna have school buses, more kids playing on the road, gonna change where you can park your car to where, I was sitting in my car the other day, just writing a note on my, an email, it was in a parked car, and I'm wondering, is this Verizon guy gonna hit me? I know he's close to that mirror, but he's trying, he was being defensive, because there's a van flying from roads. There's no stop control, there's no road, there's, anyone coming off of Beach, I'm coming off, the Beach off of Highland or coming down roads, there's no traffic control at all, it's just a free-for-all. And that brings another point. Why would we measure a beach in Highland? The, the only intersection that's of consequence really here is Beach and Silona. That's where everything's happened. And all the traffic studies should be focused on that, and it shouldn't be just numbers, it should be characterizations. The, the fact that we, we all have landscapers, we can hear the, the blowers to prove that. And they have their trucks in tow, those things are going up and down all day, especially in the summer, and it's gonna be rated as a cop. That's not the same thing. Those things are wide, they're, they're, they got stuff hanging out the back, and they're ever, they're ubiquitous. And then you have all these people who are using the shortcut as they drop off their kids or cutting around the traffic of White Plains Road or some of those, it's, it's not being captured in what you're looking at. And, and until you have three days to cover all the periods that a school right down the street, or two schools right down the street will have, you have not looked at a traffic impact. Because this is a very unique thing, and doing a traditional study of two-day parts, I don't, in a normal community that's not, night next to two schools, is going to be misleading. I, I, you can't convince me otherwise. Next thing I want to talk about is that, I heard the word comparable cul-de-sacs. Really? Who agrees with that? Are there comparable cul-de-sacs around here? How many people live next to cul-de-sacs? Zero, zero, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask.
Sir, don't play to the crowd. Speak to the board and voice your comments to the board, please.
I, I'm, I'm guilty, I'm sorry. But I, what I'm trying to do is, I'm, I'm trying to get a greater poll of, of, it's not just a guy ranting up here, that there's, there's a serious problem, and I'm advocating for that serious problem that's great representative. But I take your point. In regards to comparable cul-de-sacs, we, as has been noted in my email this afternoon, which they were responding to previously, I've commented, is, there isn't comparability. There isn't precedence for this type of, of a cul-de-sac stacking. So when we use the example on Taco Avenue, right next to a traffic light, not by two schools or any schools, not a thoroughfare, a wider street, and with much more green space, it's not comparable. It's a cul-de-sac. Yes, it's spelled the same, but it's not comparable. And on top of which, the only time you get three cul-de-sacs that would be the result of this development, three in a row, the only place that has more is exactly that spot on Taco Ave. It happens to be around us, which is right next to a, a business district. It's different in every way. And that's why I showed today in the email that got posted late this afternoon, if you look at the greater Eastchester area, and everything's circled, and I, I apologize, I missed Apple Circle across from the Eastchester High School, but there's no even close comparable stacking of cul-de-sacs, and let alone a bronchial manner where we have one off of a main road. A Mr. Carney made an email about the only one we have is off of Main Road, not off this, this crazy little intersection, it's a free-for-all while the schools are dumping on it. And, and the last thing, and I'm sure you're glad that is the last thing, I'm, I'm just curious, when we talk about a hundred water, a hundred-year water event, what is the, how does the last five years average track with the data set used for the, for the hundred-year study? Because I have a feeling it's not very aligned. I mean, the water that we're dealing with these days is stunning, and, and the speed of it. It's never been, I can, I can tell you, I don't think anyone here's ever, ever had events like they're having now. So when we talk about a hundred years, is that really more like a 20-year at this point? I don't know. But that area with the very clay soils is great for ceramics, it's terrible for percolation and for drainage, it just doesn't, it sits. It's like perma-pub. I, I, I'll bury, I'll spare you from any further ranting, but you need to look hard at this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the woman in the front come up first? Yes, please.
Hi. Good evening. Alice Thompson, 185 Beach Street. I'd like to thank the gentleman who just spoke, because he inadvertently introduced the subject that I want to bring up this evening. Many of you have heard me before, it's a long time ago, but my story is about water and the seriousness of the water problem. and the seriousness of the water problem in the surrounding areas of the construction. I am not against the cul-de-sac, I think it's great. Bill D'Ambrosio built his cul-de-sac. The houses are beautiful, the people are wonderful. It has enhanced the town, and the new one will as well. But caution has to be exercised here. I live on Beach Street, but my family's home was at 98 Highland Avenue. And there was terrible trouble with water. There's a shed behind the Highland Avenue house that has a basement in it. And the basement would fill up with water when there was any kind of serious rain. My dad would go out and put on fishing boots to go into the basement of the shed just to get the water out. Then we had mud in the middle part of the property. We owned that whole property going back, it was a beautiful piece of land. There was mud, and my husband's car got stuck in the mud so badly, all the way up to the top of the wheels, and we had to bring in a truck to winch the thing out. I was not immune from the problem. I was building my new house on Beach Street. We could not pour the cement in the foundation because it kept filling up with water. They would drain, the builder would drain it out and it would fill up again. The water was coming from the Highland Avenue property. Next door, Dr. Weber, her backyard became a swamp every time. I used to call it, she doesn't live here anymore, she wouldn't be offended, they used to call it Lake Niva. We'd look out the window, uh-oh. On the other side, the DeLeo side, you know, as I said, this affected a lot of this area right on top of the cul-de-sac. The DeLeo property, the two houses, the one further back, the water was so bad at one point, it poured out of their basement and down that big long driveway with such force that it broke the garage on the Coblock property. A number of years ago, Debbie Coblock Goldman testified to this. So I was very concerned when the plan for the D'Ambrosio cul-de-sac was to put drywells on each property because I knew this would not work. I have drywell in the front of my property, and I have two of them in the back. And with serious rain, hey, guys, it doesn't work. Luckily, the town was wonderful, and many of you who are here. Joe, you helped me very much, Margaret, everybody. And Bill D'Ambrosio was fabulous. He agreed to have an engineer come in and assess the problem and see what could be done. And what he suggested was to put a device at the foot of the driveway on the D'Ambrosio property that would pull the water off the property. It worked. We're fine. But there's a story that says that history can repeat itself. We don't want that to happen. We all want to be safe. So when you're planning the construction of the new homes, keep in mind those of us who are back behind it and make sure that our water problem and whatever's going on, that there won't be any trouble. And it was in the 1990s that this happened, so it wasn't 100 years ago. And I have another dumb question. Kids ride around on scooters, the electric scooters in my neighborhood, and I'm just picturing, I'm a retired Eastchester teacher, Greenville, excuse me. The kids ride around and on the scooters, what happens when they have all this, the buses, and this is extra traffic? Is there any way of keeping the kids with the scooters off this area? I don't know. I'm just saying that I worry because they don't look from side to side, they just go, and they go pretty fast. And that's just my other thing I was thinking about. And thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you for your colorful comments.
Carrie Setti, 10 Deerfield. So I'm just a mom, I'm not gonna speak technically, and actually, I just heard about all of this less than a week ago, so I am not up to date on all of the details. So I'll just preface my statements with that. And I do want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this. So as I mentioned, you know, I'm not gonna speak technically, and I did watch the last meeting. So at first, I just want to say, as a, you know, as someone in Bronxville Manor, I heard about the eight houses and I said, you know, this has to be wrong, right? Like eight houses on that, you know, really small piece of land. But no, I mean, as egregious as it really sounds, yes, eight houses. And that's definitely one of my big questions, why, why the magic number eight? I know, you know, you stated earlier that everyone in the vicinity, right, was told about this proposed major subdivision. And I believe that this actually affects everyone in Bronxville Manor, and I'll tell you why, because I'm gonna tell you about current state, including my, and I think everyone should be made aware, not just those in the very immediate vicinity. But so my major concerns that I'd like to talk about today, and if it's okay, I've never been at one of these events before, is really to talk about the inundated and sort of outdated infrastructure in Bronxville Manor today, particularly as it concerns the water runoff and flooding issues, along with traffic safety in a really, really narrow road of Beach. So let me talk about just, you know, sort of what I might classify, this is my opinion, you know, the outdated sort of infrastructure. So my home, actually, on 10 Deerfield Avenue was one of the original structures of Bronxville Manor. My understanding is that there are 100-year-old pipes, storm drains, sewage drains, and to my knowledge, this type of infrastructure has never really been fully overhauled. So I, you know, have the great misfortune of having a downward-sloped driveway on top of all this outdated infrastructure. And that also coupled with a super-high water table is actually pretty much a recipe for disaster. And so even when you're at the top of my driveway, across the street, 17 Deerfield, in a normal rainstorm, you will see a lake, not, not like, you know, crazy storm. It, there's literally a lake at the top of my driveway before it goes down a slope. So now imagine you're at the bottom of my driveway, which is where my basement, my garage is. And I've had many plumbers over the years, you know, I keep them on speed dial. And, you know, they always say, right, plant more trees, right, with a high water table. It's very like simple, right? Like more grass, the water can absorb it, more trees. And again, you know, I'm not an expert, right? Maybe the flood maps need to be updated with all these new, you know, homes that are being built in Bronxville Manor. But even without this new, and I think it's now classified as a major subdivision, you know, I think, you know, just from layman's terms, all that concrete, all the asphalt, right, the basements that they're all building, right, clearly the water's not gonna get absorbed there anymore, right? And now, you know, you're building eight, what I might also classify as McMansions on this very small plot of land in Bronxville Manor, which has, and I mentioned, current state, major runoff issues today. And every time I actually hear in the forecast that, you know, there's a possibility of like flash flooding, like any, anytime it's there, my heart literally skips a beat. I get a huge pit in my stomach, I call my neighbor, and I'm like, get your sandbags ready. Which, by the way, I do have them, I have them outside my garage, and I also have them inside my basement. And, and so anytime there's rain in a short period of time, the storm drains today, and I'm talking at the bottom of Deerfield, when you go down that hill, and not a crazy, like, you know, 100-year storm, which I might now say is a couple-year storm, you can actually, and this is feet on the street, I walk in the neighborhood, I'm in the neighborhood all the time, they pump out of those storm drains. Now, I'm not an expert in whatever studies have been done, right, but these are all predictions with these studies. I am in the research industry though, not, you know, related to this. But it pumps out of the storm drains at the bottom of Deerfield. Any of you, I would, I would ask you, go drive around there during any kind of rain event, and you're gonna see it. So maybe somebody needs to do a study, a study on that. And unfortunately for me, I am no stranger to having water in my basement. And I've lost everything down there, like pictures of my daughters from like, you know, when they were toddlers, right? I mean, I lost everything, and that stuff, by the way, the pictures, you can't replace. And then, by the way, what happens is, which I learned the hard way, is that your homeowners, all states not gonna renew me. And GEICO didn't want me, State Farm didn't want me, all the major insurers don't want me, right? And I had to, I had to go about it like, you know, listen, I even, you might want to look at some FEMA claims as well. So not only am I a strange, not a stranger to water in my basement, I am not a stranger to sewage in my basement as well. And I actually have some pictures for you that I would, if you would like, if you're open to it, I would love to share with you. I had three feet of water in my basement, I had sewage coming out of the toilet, because what I learned from all these plumbers I have on staff is that when there is a major rain event, you know, the storm and the sewer, they all become one, which I learned the hard way. And, you know, it is a perfect disaster because, you know, listen, I heard drywells. Well, here's the thing, when you have a downward-sloped driveway and everybody's pumping their drywells into the street, which is I think what happens, I don't know if it's like legit, but it all comes down my driveway, and I have a high-water table. And this is, this is today, like this is not with like a new major subdivision of eight houses on a little plot of land. And so, again, perfect disaster, they back up, I mean, the system's just completely inundated. And if you're all wondering where it's going, I can tell you because it's coming to my basement, it's in my basement. And here's the awful lesson that I learned in all of this, is that when that water's pouring into your home, right, and you're on the second floor, and you don't know where your cat is, and your whole family, you're worried, right, because you see the water running into your house, you didn't have time to shut off the gas for your dryer, you didn't have time to shut off the gas for your boiler, right? So now you're worried that your whole family's gonna die from like carbon monoxide poisoning, you're worried about your cat, you don't want to send your husband down there because you're like, he might get electrocuted, right? Like this really happened to me, this is like a true story. It's a nightmare, though. What I learned is when you call 911, no one is coming to help you. And if they show up, they might show up a couple of days later. So when you think of this water runoff, and this is current, this is not with eight new McMansions right down the street where now water's not gonna be absorbed, it's going to my basement, right? And I feel really bad for anyone with a high-water table who has a lower point of land, and so that's why I say it does affect everyone in Bronxville Manor. So what do you do if you're me? You get sandbags, you keep them outside your garage, you keep them inside your basement. And listen, I don't live in the Gulf of Florida, but I feel like I do. And now I think about all the concrete, the new asphalt, the major subdivision, it's all, you know, pumping at the, overflowing at the bottom of Deerfield. And I, by the way, feel really bad who's ever at the end of that sewer line, because I lived through it. And by the way, Ser Pro is not calling me back either, they're not, they didn't call me back, anyway. And I would just say, like, I've renovated my bathrooms, and what I learned really quickly was, you know, I added a sink when I updated my bathrooms, right? I had one and I was adding a third. And the plumber said, you know, this pipe here, you gotta update the pipe because now you got three sinks going to it. So now, I mean, that's very simple, that's how I think about these things, but like now, I think about the infrastructure that's, you know, like 100 years old in Bronxville Manor, you're gonna attach eight new houses, like, are you guys gonna update the entire infrastructure for, is someone doing it, is the builder doing it, are you guys doing it? I don't know. So now, just, I want to talk about the road, and anyone who's ever driven on Beach knows it's too narrow, it's not big enough for current traffic after school buses, people, bikes, strollers, scooters, runners, dog walkers. I did think it was fortuitous, I think it was the original traffic study, right, during Thanksgiving break, that was interesting. So, you know, and I know they talked about parking, and I'm sorry because I came in late, I'm not catching up, but like, are these people gonna have parties? Like these eight new families, are they gonna have birthday parties, holiday parties? Where are all those? I do wonder, just like, again, in layman's terms, where are these people gonna park? Because it doesn't seem very planful to me, but I know this is the planning committee. So I just want to also say, my son has special needs, and I also know there's some people with special needs right on Beach, right where this like new development's gonna come out. And, you know, who's gonna be looking out for my son, right? Like he has Down syndrome, he's not looking out for himself. And I think, I worry, I worry about him, right? And that narrow road, and all these people, and all these buses, and the UPS and FedEx trucks, and now you got eight new families and buses going in. I mean, to me, it's just, I'm very, very, very concerned. And then I also wonder, what about homecoming? What about all those big events? Because there's big events. My kids are in, I have the trifecta of Takahao, I have Cottle, I have middle school, and I have high school. So all those events add in EYSA soccer, if your kids play soccer, there's a lot of events over there, and now a whole new subdivision here. So finally, you know, I have to just question this magic number eight. You know, it definitely does not go with the character of the neighborhood, so maybe that's not high on anybody's priority list, but is it like, is it to stick as many houses as you can in there? Where they don't even, and I'll say, even some of the new houses that they built on like small lots, they, these people don't even know where to put their garbage cans. It's like funny because you drive by and you're like, oh, they're, they're like right almost in front of the house because there's nowhere to put them. So who's it really good for? I mean, and again, this is just a mom, a concerned mother in Bronxville Manor, it's not good for the character of the neighborhood, it's not good for traffic, it's not good for safety, it's not good for anyone who's downstream of this inundated and outdated infrastructure of sewage, storm drains, where, you know, it's already flooded. And by the way, you know, pretty soon, nobody's gonna have homeowner's insurance because everyone is gonna get dropped, like I did. And then it's gonna be the Wild, Wild West of unregulated insurers, right? And I'll also just say, you know, it's definitely not good for my basement, so I just don't know who to call, right? Like this is pre-major subdivision of eight houses. So I don't know who to call, like, should I call you, who am I calling? And then I would just say, is it good for the schools, is it good for taxes? Who's it good for? I mean, clearly the builder who's ever financing it, but it's definitely not good for me, it's definitely not good for my family, and it's definitely not good for my basement. And I would love it if I could share these pictures with you because this is, this is real, this is, this is my house today.
Put them up?
Since you want them, I'll take them, sure.
If you want, put them up on the...
Put them up, yeah, sure.
Put them on the...
Up here?
Yeah.
I bring the clips.
Magnets.
And this is the sewage. If you guys want to...
Thank you.
And then this is everything that we had, you know, leave at the curb and thank God for Eastchester garbage, right? I love those guys. Jimmy always helps me. Oh, and I forgot to tell you, also, this one, when the water was pissing into my house and it was coming up the stairs, I didn't know when it was gonna stop.
All right, we're gonna, yeah. So we're having a lot of fun here, but can you sort of wrap up? I said, we're having a lot of fun listening to you, but could you sort of wrap up, put those up, and then, and then continue? Yeah, just leave it there, that's fine. Thank you, Gary.
And then I just want to say thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. I don't think anyone's gonna top that. Who's up next?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good? Okay.
Yes?
Rose Brescher, 205 Beach Street. I spoke at the last meeting, so I'm not gonna belabor the point, I'm just gonna reiterate a little about the two concerns that I had, traffic and infrastructure. My concerns about traffic are mostly because of the variance that's requested for that intersection. Last month, we didn't have that actual number, and now we actually have a number of 108 feet, which is a 30 percent... feet, which is a 30% deficiency off the requirement. So I know that's a zoning code, but I know that's something that you are concerned with also. To me, that's not someone just asking for a few square feet in their kitchen, that's a major, major event, because we are talking about two streets that are busy, a narrow street, a wider street, another, a narrow street. So that's a very serious safety concern to me. Regarding the infrastructure, again, we've talked about that, the sanitary sewer system, it's 100 years old, that's a general kind of event. Personally, 205 Beach is in the little corner, I see it here. So we're next to lots one and two, okay? So one and two surround us. So that's four dry wells on those properties that drain, and I'll quote, let's see, where's my quote? The water will disperse to surrounding soils, okay? The surrounding soils is our basement, okay? That's where the water's going to go, because that's where the water goes now. We are downhill from both those pieces of property. I appreciate the work that's gone into this proposal, I'm sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, but having nice numbers and drawings does not make for a good project. As the other woman said, is this really good for our neighborhood? We have a good zoning code, I think we should stick with it. This is not the only option for developing this piece of property, and I think some other options should be entertained, because these ops, this option has unworkable variances and a massive water treatment facility, and I don't think that's workable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to?
Good evening, my name is John Cullen, I live at 208 Beach Street. I'd like to give the committee a little history. The reason why there's only parking on one side on Beach is because more than 20 years ago, we couldn't get fire engines down the street quickly, and so it became a safety issue. The fire department was great, they did a survey, and today, in Bronxville Manor, you see on many streets, parking only on one side, and the reason is, so the fire engines can get down through the manor quickly. The other is, we had terrible water problems, and we still do. Water comes down Beach Street and goes past my house and floods my neighbor's property. We had to put in dry wells, or have dry wells put in, and it's, water is a big problem. So we have a high water table in Bronxville Manor, and these problems have to be addressed. The property that's going to be built is a little bit higher, and gravity will bring that water back down the lower end of Beach Street, and will cause more problems, so it has to be, in my view, addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's trying to get up.
Mr. Cullen?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Francis Egan, I live at 210 Beach Street. I am the neighbor that Mr. Cullen just spoke about. The only thing that Mr. Cullen got wrong was, it was over 30 years ago. Mine was new construction, I am the only person who's ever lived in the home, it is 36 years old next month. There is a water problem, I am downhill of everybody. Fortunately, a lot of it goes past me, we were able to divert it with swells and other engineering feats. The big problem I'm concerned with is the traffic. It is much more hectic and busy than what was presented earlier by the consultants or the people who proposed the project. You're absolutely right, sir, the mornings, when I come up out of my driveway, just to get from, I am at the dead end of Beach Street. To go from there to the Dogleg, and then around out to Highland Avenue, can take a considerable period of time, considering the school buses, the box trucks, neighbors, children walking down to school, it's a great deal more hectic. And I think, another neighbor pointed out, that a visual or a picture in the morning, from 8:00, quarter to 8, until well after 9, it's a whole lot busier than that. Further problem that I have is, Mr. Cullen was so kind when we first moved in, to help get a dead end sign put up, and to deal with the police department and traffic, to have no parking on what you consider to be the south side of the street. It's absolutely necessary, because otherwise, it is approximately a 22-foot wide street, and you put a parked car on one side, a parked car on the other, and there's no way that any of the Eastchester Fire Department's apparatus is getting down that street, or an ambulance, major concerns. Another concern is that almost nobody stops at the two stop signs. Almost nobody stops. Many of them do slow down, you know, but when I come up out of my driveway, I stop, there is no, I do not have a stop sign, I have to stop, because somebody's coming back from the schools, dropping their child off, blows through that, that stop sign, and I have neighbors who have Ring cameras who could just give you the information, because they tell me, I don't see it till I'm trying to get out of my driveway. Another concern is, I am the dead end, and again, Mr. Cullen helped get me a dead end sign, not that anyone reads it, because lord knows, people are coming down, he tells me all the time, how many people come down my driveway, turn around, and go back up. Bad enough, the problem is, they do it at 10, 15, 20 miles an hour. That was bad when I had three children, they're all grown and gone, but now I've got two little granddaughters who play in the driveway, and I'm back to putting highway cones at the top of my driveway. I've put signs, but no one reads the signs, you see, they miss the dead end sign, the stop signs, and my private property sign. I'm not really quite sure where to go with this, other than to get a flaming arrow. Just try not to get upset, because you see, when I see that, the development, and I won't get into the water, others have touched it as well as I could, if not better. I'm really concerned with the traffic, and a situation that is truly unsafe, and seems to be getting uns safer by the moment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee, it's Drew Clark, 195 Beach Street. I've got a couple of questions from the last meeting, and I also wanted to, as part of this meeting, I requested that we get more information around the 12-foot variance that directly impacts my property on 195 Beach Street. Obviously, there's a direct concern here, like, I've been in enough board meetings to see the variances that impact people directly when it's on their own existing property, but a situation like this, where a variance directly impacts myself, there was no discussion or preemptive information around that particular variance, I don't see why the road has to be covering, according to the consultant, a small 31 square feet, but that's 31 square feet that is directly on my property. And I don't see why that road could not be moved 12 feet that way, so that that variance would not be required, and I wouldn't be impacted by that. We already have a fair amount of quality of life concerns here, we've heard tonight, there's going to be a direct impact on my property again with the parking, so once that parking on the south side is blocked off, all those cars will come over to the north side, meaning anybody that is either entering or exiting my property is going to have a situation where they're going to have to deal with coming around cars, and possibly into traffic coming either way as well. That directly impacts my kids, and the friends of my kids as well. So, again, the traffic pattern is hard enough in Beach Street, but now we're making it even harder. The other concern I have is around, I'd just like to understand, is there going to be a smell and noise with this treatment plant? You know, there's discussion around, you know, is there going to be water that's sitting in there? I know it's underground, but is there a situation where we are going to be impacted by either smells or sounds from that particular unit? If somebody could address that at the next meeting, that would be great. I've got a quick anecdotal story. At some point in the last couple of months, somebody went and, I think they dug sewer points at various locations on the property to or through Beach Street. When those were dug, there was a digger that went into that area to dig the holes. First off, I didn't understand why they were being dug before this planning meeting, but they were dug, so I don't know the background on that. What I do know is, that digger got stuck in that, in mud, in that area, digging those holes. They had to then get another truck, one of those really large ones, to come and pull that vehicle out of that area. Now, if anything tells you what's going to happen with the water, that's a really good sign right there. To have a huge piece of equipment go in, a digger, go and get stuck in the mud there for 24 hours, and have to have another vehicle come in and pull it out, tells you everything you need to know about what the water is doing in that area. So just, that's just anecdotal story that I want to let you know about. The final concern I had was just, if we could get more information around the HOA, where they start and where they stop with regards to that treatment plant, there's obviously concerns from a lot of people, that the maintenance of that area is, you know, maintained, right? Because, again, most of us have concerns about the water. All right? Thanks, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for having me, Matt Berenson at 190 Beach Street, so just up the road. A few questions about this traffic study, I noticed that the intersection of Beach and Rose was not included, other than Sinoi, if somebody's coming, I guess, east-west on Beach, if they don't go to Highland, and they're actually making the left onto Rose Avenue, and we have seven school-grade children who live between three houses right at that intersection. As many voiced already, the morning is the busiest time, I'd love to see additional studies be done, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays, during the school rush, as well as Saturdays, when spring sports start, if not fall as well. It's a much different look than a March, when nothing's going on at the high school or the new Cottle Field. I wanted to know, after reviewing the last meeting, what was the results of the study on the sewer capacity for wastewater? Because the system that's being put in, that's only for stormwater, correct?
Correct. Yes, the one they're referencing is detention tank, that's the one you're thinking of. The stormwater's being looked at, the capacities are being looked at right now, the sewage.
For the sewer, so that's not, that hasn't been completed?
They're looking into it now.
By my count, there's five cul-de-sacs on Highland between 22 and California Road, is a sixth as of right for the developer? And if it is, why are we even here discussing these numerous variances and the impact of Bronxville Manor? It would seem logical that, you know, the road just comes in off of Highland, they're Eastchester schools, it would be in Eastchester Road, throw one house down Bronxville Manor to keep the continuity with the block, and everybody here could save a lot of time. The houses, as on the neighboring cul-de-sac, appear to be, on the newest one, Ambrosi, by quick measurement, seem to be about 1,200 square meters per lot, where this one proposes to be about 800 square meters, so there seems to be about a 30% reduction in the size of each lot, so wondering how that actually fits with the zoning, and how that would be required. And in addition, or they're, you know, I guess similar to my neighbor Drew, what measures are being taken to make sure this HOA remains solvent? Is it going to be incorporated? Not 100% sure how HOAs work, but are they essentially backed by, you know, the properties themselves, if these owners stop wanting to pay, because this water system doesn't work as intended, and is required a lot of upkeep or major repairs? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Again, we appreciate all the comments, we realize there's lots of issues here, you're going to have to give us a chance to go back and circle through, and come up with some responses to come back to. That's, we're here to take the comments, not address them right now, but we have them, and we certainly will continue to work through this application with the public, as well as with the developers and our consultants. So for tonight, I think we're going to just move to the next application. Thank you.
And the public hearing stays open.
Ma'am, did you want your photos back?
Yep.
We can, we can take them as part of the record, because they were presented, if you don't mind, we'll keep them in the record, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. The next application?
Maybe wait, wait just a moment, we'll have to clear out Jim.
Yeah, I know, who is 5 Ray Place? Where's the other applicants? There's two, all rising up. Good night.
Okay, not so, I'm forgetting there.
Okay. The next application is Ray Place, 22-47, 5 Ray Place. Any takers?
He's getting set up.
You could go get it, you could go get it and come back.
We're going to be here a while.
I don't know, Woody and Fire's on the way, so maybe we ask them to...
That's him.
If you go get a pie, we're good.
Get a pie first, then we'll let you go.
Hey, what do you got?
Woody and Fire.
Huh?
Woody and Fire.
Oh, no, you got it, how long's that going to take? I don't know.
No, we were just saying, we're getting hungry, maybe, we were just saying, we're getting hungry, we're going to ask them to get pizza.
I mean, if you got like, the single item in the line, you know, we'll let somebody with a single item, other than that, are you single? You're single? I'm fine with it, then.
No, 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 we'll stick to the agenda, no, we're just kidding, we're going to stick to the agenda.
Yeah, you're right.
Hi, everybody, my name's Jaime Martinez, I'm the Director of Development for Trinity Development. We're here with John Saraceno, he's the owner, one of the owners of the property, as well as Ed Vogel, who is the architect who worked on this project, along with John Anastasio, who was at the ARB meeting last week. Before we get started, I did want to just say, thank you to Margaret, you know, I know everybody knows she's leaving, but she has been a fantastic person to work with for our organization. And for me personally, I actually got to meet her when I was a young planner some years ago, and I just, you know, the recollection of her was being very nice, very gracious, and very helpful, so, you know, just wanted to give her, give her her flowers.
Thank you.
With that in mind, I do have a presentation, which I would like to present today. But I don't see it on the screen. Oh, there it is, all right. So I was not involved in the original approval of this project, so I don't know if all of you were here for that, so I do have a quick synopsis of what the project is, and then we're going to get back to the amendments. So the, you know, describing the project outright, it is an 18-apartment project, it has nine one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units, there are 31 parking spaces, it's an all-electric building, so no gas, kind of, does allow it, obviously, with the mortuary, but it makes for a much greener project. And the original building, when we came to this planning board, had 21 units, we've taken three units out, because we felt some of those apartments were a little too small. One of the benefits of that is that we now only need 31 and a half spaces, rather than the 33 spaces that I think we were required to have under the original layout, which is a little bit better for us, and I think it's a lower parking demand, which is a benefit to the project. The proposed project changes are, we are going to, we're proposing to change the mansard roof material from a metal shingle to the slate material that you have in front of you. We're proposing the elimination or reduction of decorative... We're proposing the elimination or reduction of decorative railings on the windows. We would, we'd like to add some squared, louvered vents for the apartment HVAC units that will be colored matched to the adjoining material. That will allow us to remove the roof-mounted HVAC equipment that's currently approved. We would be proposing to eliminate the stair bulkhead and reduce the size of the elevator bulkhead from 14 feet 6 inches down to 5 feet 6 inches, which would essentially take the activity off the top of the roof, lower the building, and hopefully have less problems and concern for our neighbors at Five Ray Place. We're adding some garage exhaust vents. These are kind of minor issues that normally are just part of the construction process. Many of these might not have yielded us coming back to the board, but because we have several small items, we want to make sure that we're comprehensive in addressing them to the board. We also are changing the cornice material from FIPON to EFIS. We're adding two electrical utility poles to Ray Place. We have the removal of decorative, a decorative wall around the egress path on the northern side of the site. And we are adding an emergency generator in conformance with the building code. So I have more specifics. I'm going to go through the, sort of, list individually, and we'll talk about this. All of this information that I presented today is in the materials that were submitted to you, whether that was in the cover letter or supplemental letter that was provided, or the actual drawings that were permitted. But, you know, for the purposes of this, I, I wanted to hone in on this, so we didn't have to be shuffling through PDFs. So this is the original approved west elevation. You can see it has the bulkheads at the top of the building, and has those metal decorative railings on the central column and the top. And this is the approved south elevation. You can see the bulkheads there. This is the approved east elevation. You can see the three bulkheads there, which are the stairwell bulkheads, and the larger one is the elevator bulkhead. And then you can see the approved north elevation. Here you can see that there is that little wall around that egress path on the northern side, as well as that inset area where the stair bulkhead went all the way up. The propos, this is a proposal for the, what essentially the west elevation is going to be. I'm going, I'll show you all of them, but this, you can see here, we're proposing to use those HVAC louvered units. There'll be a zoomed-in picture farther into the presentation, but you can see that there, the, the railings are taken away, and essentially it is otherwise the same. The, the color of the material for the roof is, is functionally the same. It was a metal shingle before. It's a slate shingle now. So this is the proposed south elevation. Again, not much change except for the railings. The proposed east elevation, not much change for the, but for the railings, lost the bulkhead and those HVAC vents. And then the proposed north elevation. You can see there's a good bit of difference here. The building was sort of brought together. That bulkhead allowed for some ease of design there. Made it a little bit more continuous for the mansard roof around the, the top of the building. And we were able to eliminate that additional wall around the egress path. So the materials that we're proposing to change to are a natural slate material. You have it right there in front of you. You know, slate is as old as time. So I don't think you have to get much description of what slate is for a roof. It's a beautiful material. I think it's, it's amongst the best materials that you can get for a roof. It is also at a significant cost savings due to the fact that metal is very expensive. Over the past few years, prices have gone up. So this is a better product for us. It actually turns out to be, we think, a better product, design-wise, for the project. And so we proposed it to the ARB. I think the ARB did come back with support for that change. So that's in front of you there. We're proposing to eliminate or reduce the amount of decorative railings that we have on the windows. Now currently, we do have, you know, we proposed to eliminate them entirely. The ARB did not recommend this. The ARB asked that we keep it as it is and approved before, and I, you know, we're not here to skirt around that issue. They don't want us to get rid of it. We would still like to get rid of it. We are open to the idea of potentially leaving it on one side on Ray Place. We would prefer to not have to deal with the maintenance upkeep with it that could come with the problems. We think it's better for the windows in general. Everywhere we have those railings, you can't operate those windows on the bottom, so you'll be able to operate the upper windows. You'll not be able to operate those lower windows. It comes at an additional cost. We just, we, we don't think it's a good fit. We did at one time think that it would be nice. We sort of changed our mind on it. And we're asking this board to consider allowing us to either eliminate them or to, at a minimum, only require us to have them on the Five Ray Place side. We have, you know, the northern elevation, the southern elevation, where these railings are essentially facing the back of CVS and a parking lot. We have another one that's facing White Plains Road. So, you know, we don't feel like it adds that much. Obviously, the ARB did not agree with us, but we, we'd ask that you consider that. This is a, an example of what it would look like without the elevators. This is the proposed west elevation, but essentially this is, you know, that building without the railings. For the louvered vents for the apartment HVAC units and the removal of the mounted HVAC equipment, the new roof, the way it would work is, you can see in the lower left-hand corner, we have essentially a small elevator bulkhead, and then we have a hatch that you can use to access the roof. We're not going to have any mechanicals. We don't anticipate to have many mechanicals, other than maybe some vents on the top of the roof. So it should be a much quieter, less messy, and, and certainly less busy roof than it was before when we were considering using it as a sort of space that the tenants could use, which would have been nice for the tenants, but I don't believe that the individuals at Five Ray Place were super excited about the idea of having people on top of the roof and them looking into that. So it's, I think it works out in their favor as well. It's something that they did like. The key for us here is, I don't think we sort of approached this from the standpoint of trying to get rid of that access. But by changing to this high-efficiency heat pump system, as opposed to systems that are mounted on the roof, it allowed us to eliminate all of that need to get up there anyways. And so with that need, we were able to get rid of those stair bulkheads. And we decided to just eliminate what was going to be a small space for active use by the tenants. The louvers themselves are essentially 11 inches by, I think, like 16 inches or 18 inches, thereabouts. They're color-matched specifically, so you can order them directly from the company. You give them a color. You tell them what color you want them to be. So they're going to be color-matched in every instance to the, either the brick material that they're on, the roof material that they're on, so that they're essentially invisible except for small louver lines. And those are for the heat exchange, the air exchange that you need for a heat pump system. These heat pumps are going to be mounted to the ceiling inside the units, so they're going to be extremely quiet, very kind of non-not noticeable, high efficiency. And, and one of the benefits, just from a sustainability standpoint, is that you want to give people control, the ability to turn on the heat where they want it and where they don't, rather than, you know, having heat or air in the entire building so that you can have the energy savings that come with that. So if you say, oh, my bill's too high because I'm keeping my spare room with too much AC. It's my office, and maybe I'm not in there all the time. You can set the heat to a lower level, 50 degrees, whereas your bedroom might be 75 degrees. So that's a benefit of having that separated heat pump system, rather than a central system that keeps the entire apartment, some of which are quite large, 1,200-square-foot apartments, all heated at the same level. So in order to do that, we need these louvers, and that's why we're making the request for that change. This is the previously approved plan, and you can see what's listed here as a green roof. It's not really a green roof. It's just an accessible roof. And you can see those bulkheads and sort of the, the space to get around. So that's, that's the old plan that we have an approval for today, as opposed to the new plan, which, which essentially is a stair hatch and very minimal equipment on top. And you can see here, this is kind of the, the best way to see the distance, the difference between the elimination of that stair bulkhead. So you can see, it, it makes a pretty significant impact on the side of the, on the north side of the property facing CVS. I, I think it, it would be hard to argue that this is not an improvement. We've taken that mansard roof, brought it all the way around, eliminated the height of that bulkhead, eliminated the sort of, the kind of gap in design that you lose because of the way it was designed before, and have improved it, I think, all around, so. We've added garage vents. So again, we, we needed garage vents just for mechanical ventilation. It's a requirement of the code, so we added a vent. It's going to be on the White Plains Road side. You're not going to see it. It's a small change. But we, you know, we want to be as forthcoming as possible with all of the changes. There's the change of the cornice material from FIPON to EFIS. We talked about this at the ARB. This is essentially because of the material, FIPON just was not going to work for the construction of it. We just need to use a different material. It was listed in the plans that were submitted, so we just wanted to, again, be forthcoming. This is essentially a construction issue, more than it is really a material issue. You're not going to notice the difference, but it, it would be impossible for us to use FIPON. We need to use EFIS. It wasn't noted at that time, so we're noting it now. We're also requesting the addition of two electrical poles, utility poles, to Ray Place. So previously, we were going to have a pole come all the way from Brook Street, up the block, under the sidewalk, across the street, and all the way up to the property. I think it was essentially 200 linear feet, 230 linear feet. You know, it's very expensive to do all that work, all that trench work, all that change. It, it, you know, over the past few years, I'm sure, as you're probably all in the business or have been listening to this for some time, costs have gone up significantly. And in that area, and I think in Eastchester in general, utility poles are pretty common. If you go to ConEd and you ask for electrical service, if you don't have it on your property, they put up utility poles. They bring it right to your property. You don't pay anything. But the minute you tell them that you want to put it underground, they charge you for all of the work involved with doing that, which is significant. So that's why we're back here today. Now, I want to point out kind of where they are. You can see these two poles. One would be located on the corner of Brook and Ray, in the grass, right around the sidewalk where we're going to be putting in a brand-new sidewalk. And then one would be near the corner of the property. And this is the exact same condition that you have on the opposite street, Dunn Woody, next to Five Ray Place. So Five Ray Place, when it went up, got a brand-new telephone, again, brand-new utility pole, run to the corner of their property. That one actually is next to a house, as opposed to this one, which is next to the side of the CVS. Had it run all the way to the end of Dunn Woody, and then at that point, it went underground, and it connected to their property. We're asking for the same treatment, exactly the same treatment. So to give you an example, right, you can see Five Ray up there in the upper left-hand corner, and you can see the utility pole that is connected to only Five Ray, because there are buildings and houses on the other side of it.
Yeah.
24, I'm not, not Five Ray, I'm sorry. 24 Ray Place. Apologies. There, there are houses behind that, but they're serviced by a different utility pole. That utility pole services only 24 Ray Place, and it's pretty similar to what we're asking for. The location right now is going to be on Ray Place, and Brook Place would be essentially in line with where the wires are today. So tried to do a sort of really rough kind of a rendering of how this would look, based off of the, the Google Street View. And so you can see, it would just be two 20-to-30-foot standard-sized utility poles, one at the corner of Five Ray Place, and one at the corner of Brook and Ray. That's essentially what it would look like. It would tie in over there. There would also be a transformer, which I didn't demonstrate on this, but it's a standard-sized transformer.
On the pole?
Yeah, on the pole, similar to what you see.
Like the one in the photo?
Yes, very similar to that. So there are a couple of different kinds. There's a square. I was told by ConEd, you know, you can kind of get the can size, or you can get the square size. They really don't care, but it, they're essentially the same thing, same size, similar functions. We're also recommending a removal of decorative, of the decorative wall around the egress path on the northern side of the site. So you can see here the area that we're talking about. There's a little red box around it. You can, the blown-up box shows you that egress path. And you can see from that elevation on the side that there was that little decorative wall. It, it's really, it's just not needed. It's not needed for any purpose, and so we're, we're proposing to remove it. And then we're adding an emergency generator. And when we went through the approval process before, we did not have a generator designated for that site. This is located, we have to do it by code, so we have to have a generator. We, you know, there's a couple of different ways that you try to crack this egg, but this one is located to the back of the commercial area, away from the residential property. You would not want to have it, you know, anywhere near Ray Place, because that would be closer to the residential properties. You wouldn't want it on the other end of the property, closer towards the Chico's, because that property could get redeveloped in the future. If there's, you know, somebody over there, they're probably not going to want to hear it either. So we placed it right where it was most optimal for us to have it, for safety purposes, for access to, to, you know, working with it, so that you can get it from the parking lot, and, and it would have the, the least amount of impact to any residents in the area. So that's it.
Can you tell me again that this was approved originally for 21 units?
Yes.
And you're reducing that number to 19?
18.
18, 18, okay.
What did we approve previously as far as the utility pole goes?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'm sorry. What did we approve previously as far as the utility pole? How was, was it going underground up Ray and then?
Yes. It was going to come from Brook.
Yeah.
So when the original plan was made, honestly, you know, I wasn't here for that, but it, it always would have made sense to have a pole put on the corner of Brook and Ray. There's the line there. It didn't make a ton of sense to run it all the way down there. We should have asked for that then. We didn't.
So what was shown on the plans, it was always shown as underground, coming from Brook Street up Ray, underground.
That was the last pole.
Yes, from existing pole, and then it was underground, yes.
So we had, always had a pole at that corner, but not one up Ray?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, so, yes, the, the pole is on Brook Street, and they're proposing the two new poles on Ray. So yes, it was always underground from that pole on Brook Street. And it really wasn't discussed that much at the meeting, because it was, it was proposed as underground. It wasn't an issue, so.
Margaret, when, when did Five Ray Place first come before us as a concept? Do you recall when it was?
I believe it was before COVID.
Well, definitely, it was before COVID, for sure.
I mean, we had, we had many of the meetings on Zoom, but I think that, oh, I should have it in my notes here.
It's on, in your notes, I believe, July 20th, '21?
Well, that's probably, that's when it was approved. So I, I think we had a couple of in-person meetings initially, and then we moved to Zoom. So that would have been prior to March of 2020.
So maybe, maybe late 2019?
Ma'am, please, if you want to speak at the public hearing, you have to come up to the mic, so let's wait, okay, please?
Do we have to decide on the, the railings?
Excuse me, what was that?
Do we have to decide on the railings? You're asking us to remove them? Contrary to what the ARB has advised?
Well, I was told that we could ask, and, you know, you don't ask it. You never know.
But you did say something. You said you can't operate windows because of the railings?
Yeah.
Because they're hopper windows, or what?
They're inoperable.
Inoperable.
The windows are huge, right? So there's essentially two sets of windows on top of each other. The bottom half, where the railings are, will be inoperable. The top half will be operable.
Oh, okay.
These are massive windows, though. The windows are the, kind of, the best part of the project.
Right. Them being inoperable is not a function of the railing. It's just the way they were designed.
No, it is a function of the railings. Because those railings are there, it doesn't make, you can't, it doesn't make sense to operate them. I think the architect can better answer this question, though.
Do the windows open out? Is that it, and they can't open out because of the, okay, that's.
That's what I just asked.
So they can only open a tiny bit, I guess, you know, in theory.
So why can't you get windows that can go vertical, that could go up and down rather than out?
Then I guess you're changing the windows.
Yeah, in their case, they're windows.
If you want to operate a window, you get one that works.
Evening. Ed Vogel, Washower, Melissa Washower Architects. So, yes, the windows on the upper part are going to be casements, outswing. And the lower half of the windows would be fixed. Part of that drive is because of the ornamental balconet railings that are out in front, because you wouldn't be able to operate the lower portion of the window. The window opening itself is
The window opening itself is roughly seven foot in height. It stands about eight inches from the floor and runs close to the ceiling. It is a major feature, as Mr. Martinez had mentioned, to the units themselves, but we want to keep that openness for the window. Changing the style of the window is a possibility, but that's not the style for this building.
But, but, did you say the windows are only seven inches above the floor level? Is that what you said?
The window starts.
The window starts, okay. So my assumption is you were never going to have those windows, the bottom part of the windows, opening at that point anyhow, because that would be a safety problem.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, so the fact that the, the fact that the windows are unable to operate, the bottom half of the windows are unable to operate because of the decorative railings is really a bit of a moot point, that they've never were going to operate, right?
They do not need to operate.
Okay, thank you.
Right, we're talking about the railings, I was just more curious as to what the design intent was. All right, Louis, what do you think?
But they do, I understand the value they give to the units from the interior, but I do think that the building, as it's viewed from the public and us, as a board, from the exterior, it seems like it is missing something without the railings.
Can you, can you put a, can you put a rendering back up, with and without?
So here's the, and let me show you the Five Ray facade. So this is the Five Ray facade with the decorative balconets. I don't want to say this wrong. I'm a planner, not an architect. So, we have them on the central column, we have them in the top. We don't have them in every window.
Can you keep going around to the other?
That's the way it's approved today.
Right, can you keep going to the other elevations?
Mm-hmm. So that's the south elevation, and it's on the top. That's the east elevation, it's on the top. And that's the north elevation, it's on the top.
Now, now the proposed?
So it's only, as approved, it's only the Ray Place side, the west elevation?
Ray Place side has the primary design with the railings.
Correct, but that's the only side that has the railings approved for beneath the top floor.
Correct.
At one elevation.
And it's only that center, center piece.
Which is kind of why we are open to the idea of maybe splitting the baby and saying, let's keep the Ray side, let's keep the Ray Place side, and allow us to eliminate them on the other three sides.
Could you keep going?
Where it has a minimal...
Could you keep flipping to the next elevation?
So the proposed elevation, again, shows it with nothing. So this is the proposed west elevation, the proposed south elevation, proposed east elevation, and the proposed north elevation. Now, the, again, the balcony on the top floor adds something to the windows, but the mansion roof also adds significantly to the architectural detail on that top floor. So, while I do understand the, you know, the idea that it does add an element to it, there are a significant amount of different architectural details that make this a lovely building without those railings. Decorative balconets, sorry.
I kind of like what was approved.
Yeah. I would have to agree with that.
Yeah, I think it adds more texture.
Yeah, and I, I think the ARB...
I think it's nicer.
The ARB, yeah, the ARB also was pretty insistent on that. I watched some of that...
They were pretty insistent?
Yeah.
Well, they weren't all super insistent, but some of them were quite insistent.
Yes.
There was, there was at least one member who was open to the idea of maybe leaving them only on the top, but that did not get voted on.
Okay. Please keep... But leaving it only on the top would really only remove three railings, that's it.
Right, at least.
Can you go to the first page of the presentation where you have that 3D rendering, a perspective view of the building?
Yeah.
Right.
So this rendering was done with the balconets, and it was done when the color of the roof was a little bit different.
Right.
We didn't update the rendering, because honestly, it's quite expensive to go through this process, and the only difference is the shade of that. We thought that the presence of that slate material would give you a real essence, rather than sort of a designer's vision of what it looks like on a cartoon.
What do you think of those?
Is this slate going to be dark enough? What do you think, Louis?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it will?
I think, I think the, you know, thinking about the railings...
We do have the original materials that were approved, and I'll bring that up here so that you can see, it's pretty similar color.
Yeah, right.
Very similar color.
Yeah.
So I want to stick on the railings for a second.
Yeah.
I think the slate is, the slate is good. I like that, and it's, you know, definitely the right option, I think, right substitution. But I don't know, something to me, when I'm looking at this rendering, is missing. The railings gave it just a different scale.
Yeah, the railings are on this rendering.
They're on this rendering?
Yeah, they're there.
I don't think it's a great rendering, because you just don't really read very clearly.
It's not very flattering.
Yeah, it's...
I think they read better on the elevations.
Yes.
Yeah, they really do.
The elevate, I mean, so the problem, I'm, I'll show you the elevations, the problem with the elevations is that they don't...
Oh, I see.
Define the scale, right?
I'm looking at it.
What looks very thick here is not necessarily how thick it would be in actual construction.
Right. Oh, those are the colors, right?
So in this rendering, you mentioned that the coloration seems a bit lighter in the rendering, but are the railings proposed to be black, right?
Yeah, the, the railings...
Or were proposed to be black?
Well, I, I'm sorry, Ed, maybe you can ask that question? I don't know.
They were approved.
Right. Yes, the railing color, or the, for the balconets, the ornamental railings are to be black or close to the ebony color of the window frames.
Understood. I guess what the difference is, what I'm noticing here, is that there's, in the elevation, there's actually more depth shown, because the railings look like they're terminating into the casing on the side of the windows, as opposed to the rendering where the railing looks like it is just sitting in front of the window and terminating into the side of the casing instead of into the front of the casing.
I would say, you know, obviously, the elevations that are done by the architect are more accurate.
Right, of course.
And the rendering, which is done by an outside entity who's trying their best to photorealistically demonstrate what it looks like. At the same time, the challenge with a rendering is those hard, black lines that show corners are much heavier than they would be in real life. So it's sort of a, look at them both and make a determination.
I think the railings have to stay in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they do.
Railings thing. Any other?
They're to ask.
Sorry. Any other changes that we want to inquire about? I think everything else is pretty much...
It's okay with the others.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah, I think, certainly the emergency generator is fine.
Right.
Yeah, why didn't you have one before?
I guess...
Why wasn't there one originally there?
He wasn't here before.
Couldn't tell you, but I don't know if the code required it when it was designed originally, and it does now, so...
All right, if there was anything else, let's open the public hearing.
Did you have any comments about the utility poles?
I think we're leaving it, right? I don't think we, I don't think we have a choice. I'd love to say go underground. What is the cost?
It's, it's going to be over $100,000 to get it just from Brook Street, it'd take a quarter of a million dollars to get it from where it was originally approved. It takes, it costs nothing to do it as designed. And so that's, that's the difference. As proposed, I apologize, yeah, as proposed. ConEd will bring it and won't charge us anything, because they're going to make money off of the electricity. We're not paying for the connection, we're paying for the digging and the work that has to be done to get it underground all that way.
Right. I remember last time we went over this, we were sort of sticklers, and we, we talked more about the poles and the above ground to get it to Brook. And then we just took it for granted that it was going underground, and now I'm looking at it and saying, doesn't look so bad. But what isn't on that rendering that you showed us is the transformers on that. That's a little misleading.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, it's just a...
Yeah, it gets a lot of...
In my effort to do it, we tried to get it done, the, when I spoke to ConEd, and I'm going to take you to that picture, they did say that we don't actually need to put the transformer there.
Like that?
The alternative is that we'd have to put the transformer in the front of the property, somewhere. We'd have to site it, and it would be visible from the ground, as opposed to visible from the air.
That's better.
I mean...
It'd be screened.
It might be better, I don't know. If you think it makes more sense for us to put the transformer on the ground...
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the...
I think we'd go back and we'd work with ConEd, it wouldn't be a problem with us. We don't have it sited on our site plan right now, but if you're saying that you'd agree with it, I think we'd be up to that. We did ask ConEd whether it was possible to put it on the property. They said we just have to put a concrete pad in.
Oh, yeah, in the area.
And they placed it on the property.
I'm sorry. I understand. Yeah, and when you look at it, we were making a big stink about how they're going to get the wires to that, and then you'd like, you'd turn around and look at the rest of the street, and there's like wires everywhere.
Yeah.
But what would be the proximity of those two poles, the existing pole and the new one? I mean, I know the new one was always...
Yeah, so this is it. So CVS, there's a pole that's right in front of CVS.
Right, right.
And so, you know, we talked to them about where the best place was to locate it. They said that we should put it in that patch of grass, right there. So it is, it is sort of rendered precisely where it would be. That is where it would be. The, the distance between the two poles is about 100 feet, and that's where the end of the property line is for CVS, and that's where the Five Ray property starts. So it's going to go there, and then it's going to go underground. So the nice thing is that you drive up Five Ray, it'll be underground at that point, you'll see the building, it'll be beautiful. Those utility poles will be on the side of CVS, so they're not going to block any windows from CVS. They're not going to be blocking any neighbors' windows who are trying to look out, and now looking at a window pole.
How does it get to the pole on Brook?
It's going to run, you see the transformer that's there?
The next one over.
It's going to connect from that spot, that pole over, as opposed to what they had proposed before, which was to run it to the pole all the way, I think that's to the west, to the next pole, which is very far away. And again, I'm not really sure why they decided to run it from that line as opposed to here, but for whatever reason, that's what ConEd originally came up with.
Right, last time we were here, we were talking about what you just said, that it was coming from the west.
Yeah.
Well, and actually, that was you and Phil at a pre-meeting, so this was never before the board previously.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so this is the first time it's before the board. That was a discussion that you and Phil were involved in.
So I'm okay if we make sure the transformer is at the base up Brook.
On the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, as you said, it gets to that pole and it disappears, and you have to see it.
Yeah, well, I mean, as, if you want to make that a condition of the approval...
Sure.
And we'll, you know, with our construction submission, which we've already submitted, I think we had like 100% plans almost at this point submitted, so when we're going through, we'll just update the plans, show that there, and we can handle it. I don't know where it would go right now, but that's a decision for an engineer, I don't know that it...
Okay, got it.
It's a small transform.
So could you just clarify for me, you're saying a transformer...
Not on the poles.
Not on the pole.
At, when it, when it terminates at that second pole up Brook, could you go back?
On the property.
Yeah, can you put a transformer, whatever it looks like, it's...
Where? Where? Saying on the property. Yeah, it would be on the property, it would be on Five Ray Place, property.
Pull up a plan, just, can you get a plan up?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Let me know where it would be. Yeah, it's going to, so where's the pole?
I have the actual plan, I just...
Previously approved plan, I think.
It was right there, I remember there was something there. So it seems like it has to be right where the pole is?
Close proximity to it, but you can, this could be easily screened.
Like at the corner of the property? Actually, we have your roof plan up here from your presentation.
Yeah, the previously approved roof plan.
The, you want to see the previously approved?
Yeah, I mean, it's just as good as anything else, right?
You can see the green space around the building easily. The previously approved roof plan in your presentation.
Yeah, this is the site plan, so this is, the previously approved roof plan is just a cut-in of this, make sure that it's upright. That, that's not me. I don't know what that is. Apologies, that's not what I'm looking at, that's why I'm confused right now, there...
Okay.
Sometimes, it gives me the dual-screen action, so let me just change my display settings. Yeah, you want to see that? No, while I'm pulling this one?
Yeah, page 16, I think it's.
Okay. Apologies about that, I didn't realize y'all were looking at something different. So this is that plan that you're talking about, I think.
Yeah, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah, so the, you know, the most likely location would be somewhere around here.
Right.
That lower northwestern corner of the property.
That's about where we'll end up?
That's what we were thinking, and something easily, where it could easily be screened.
You know, again, I have to talk to the site engineer, but essentially, that, it would have to come down. The way that the utility line is run right now, there's a transformer run along the property into the building that way, so it would continue to follow a similar path to where the underground wires would follow now.
So they, they still have to go underground, but not as far?
Yeah, yeah, they would, they'd have to go underground to get to the transformer, and then they would go back underground to get to the building.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
How big is, how dimensions of a transformer?
Dimensions of the transformer, I got to remember off the top of my head, I want to say it's about three, the ones that go on the pole, which are similarly shaped to the ones that would go underground, it's about three feet high or something.
So, yeah.
Eight, 16 inches, they're not huge.
Not monstrous.
No.
Small enough for a screen, okay, we're good.
You know, we'd have to follow the code as to, whatever is required, but they're not massive.
Right, we're going to put it there, and we're going to put some landscaping around it, or, can you put landscaping around it?
We'd have to check the code, but we certainly want to, we don't want us to be able to see it, so we're probably going to try to provide something to, to hide it as much as possible. You have to keep it accessible, but I'm sure you can add some landscaping around them.
So that's the condition, cool. Anything else we want to talk about? As far as the application goes?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm comfortable.
So, stand by. So we have to, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-47, Five Ray Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, Charlie Gallinick, 21 Potter Place. We have this project going on from sometime in 2019, and it seems recently, in its last year or so, that this organization is saying, well, you know, things are getting a little expensive, so like the metal roof now, we're going to put a slate, a slate roof on, and at one time, they were burying the cables, but now they're going to go on poles above. And if I'm correct, I think we were having gas heating into this building.
No.
No?
No.
Always electric? Did we have any original, there were no vents in front of, on the building above each apartment?
Yeah, the heat pumps are new. Correct.
Or they just way up on the top, the big vents?
They, they changed their system such that they need the vents now. Correct.
So now, now the building is gonna have all these vents where we didn't have them before. At one time, when this went before the Architectural Review Board, they had, they had recommended to the builders to put the railing on it, to just give a little bizzazz to the building. And of course now, that's another cost factor, so that basically if I got this correct, is eliminated.
No.
No, we just asked them to put it back on.
So the railing is still gonna be on all those windows that they had originally planted, all of them?
Yes.
They tried. They didn't work.
Is that correct? Good, good.
Yeah, they didn't get. They, they didn't get past us.
I, I thought those railings in front of the windows were gone.
Yeah, we.
We just, we asked them to put it back on.
Now, the railings on the top of the roof, wasn't it designed at one time with those railings that, that was gonna be open space for the tenants and residents of that building? And if so, what's happening now? Those railings are gone, which I'm gonna bet you that it's not gonna be open to the residents of that building.
It, it's not proposed, it's, it's not, the applicant had indicated that they're no longer proposing access to the roof and by eliminating access to the roof, they're also eliminating quite large bulkheads that would allow that access to the roof. So.
Thank you, Margaret. So one of the things what I'm asking or, or suggesting or basically asking, if originally we had railings and that was open to the residents, is that fairly correct or is that not correct?
I, I don't know what the usage.
Cause I thought it was supposed to be like, I don't wanna say green space, but a space where the residents could go up.
So.
So now.
It was. Now it's.
Right, but the, but, um.
All right, continue.
So basically, if we still have that open space up on the roof.
No.
No.
Okay, right. So now, did we have it at one time?
Yes.
So why are the building builders taking away that now? This was something, this was supposed to be this great building for the community and for the area. And this was gonna be for the folks in the building, the residents, that they would have this opportunity. My point that I'm trying to say tonight is they're gnawing away at anything that costs them money. I guarantee you that the cost of burying it, those cables would be very, very expensive. And that's probably why they got away. I'm gonna also say, which they said, going from metal roofs to slate roofs because the metal was too, is now very expensive. All these things in retrospect, whose fault is it? It's, they've had this thing since twenty nineteen. It was approved last year. So now should we, the residents of Eastchester, have, keep on diminishing what was agreed on with the, with the boards and now just keeps on gnawing away? When they wanna take away something from the quality of this building, it keeps on getting a road in the way. And what I'm suggesting is, when's it stop? Okay? If we have an original building said a certain way that was agreed on a year ago and they were hap, well, I don't know if they were happy, but they agreed to it. And then all of a sudden now it's not. So now we're taken away. We're taken away and taken away. So I would ask you to look at what they originally asked for. Get away from these little vents in, in front of this building and you gotta remember the height of this building. I don't think they can go down very deep. I believe it's almost gonna be no foundation. If it is, I would believe it would be minimal. Cause I, if I understand it, that's all a big ridge of, of stone.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just one, one quick comment. Um, so I remember throughout the initial approval process that one of the major issues was building height. Um, and what this new application has done was actually lowered the building height and also took away the bulkheads for the elevator and stairs to get up to the roof area. So that building height has come down. Now in terms of the slate roof, slate is a very beautiful material. Um, it's not inexpensive at all. And I think the issue that the developers run into is more of a supply chain issue in terms of availability for the metal roofing. So I don't think, um, the height really is, should be still considered an issue because the building is coming down. Um, and they're substituting some materials based on current supply chain issues and also availability.
Thank you. But also, I believe another thing that they have taken away, if I understood it tonight, I believe like corner caps going down, uh, the building. I don't know if there's another name for them. But I thought I saw that tonight, that they're taking that away too. The material, different type of material and it, it's, it seems they're gnawing away at what was originally approved and now it just seems, it keeps on going downhill. And I'd ask yous to take a look and see what was and what is proposed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Hi, Pat Gabriel, twenty-four Ray Place. Um, I'm concerned about the, the changes they're making because again, I think they are cost-cutting measures that they're taking.
You know, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you mind?
I'm concerned with the changes they're making because I believe that they are being initiated because of cost-cutting.
They've admitted as much. Yes, they've said that. They're wide open about it.
So what I'm concerned about, I live right across from where this building is. The building's gonna take away my sunlight. It's gonna, that's the only view I have and now in what I see are beautiful trees, now I'm gonna see a building. So now you're adding these utility lines that I have to see. Whereas before they were underground and now I'm gonna be seeing them right outside my window. So I'd like you to consider maybe having them look into, keeping them the way they were before, underground. Um, I appreciate what you said about not having the transformers on the poles. That was a, a big help. But I'd like to see no poles at all if we can, if you can possibly consider that. Um, and my other concern is, I mean, all these cost-cutting measures they're doing, right now the only solace I have is to not, to not see this building too much is the trees that are on Ray Place facing that building. They're nice trees, they're big, they're grown, they're, they, you know, kind of like cover the view a little bit. And when they do all their work, the, uh, digging, the excavating and with all the dust and the bricks that, the pebbles that might be flying around, it might destroy the trees. So what are they gonna do to protect that? I mean, they're doing all these cost-cutting measures. I don't, I don't want them to do cost-cutting that's gonna impact my building. It's gonna get dirty from all the work. What are they doing about that? So my two things are looking into the underground pole, underground option rather than poles. And what are they gonna do to protect that my building, the trees, the building doesn't get impacted by, um, the work that they do? Because they are trying to cut coin, they are trying to cut costs. I understand everything has gotten more expensive. But if you can't afford to do the building the right way, don't do the building at all. That's it. Thank you.
Are you specifically talking about the trees on your property or the?
Yes, on twenty-four Ray Place, on Ray Place, the trees right outside my window, they're fully grown trees. So they give me some protection from seeing the building. But if, if they do work and if they do excavating and, and blasting and stuff, you know, little pebbles are gonna go. If they hit the trees, the trees are gonna get destroyed. They're not gonna be able to dust, pebbles and so, you know, what kind of, uh, recompense will we get for that? Because that's the only thing that's gonna not make me see this building right in front of my face. Cause my, there's about nine units that the only view we have, we only have the windows on the one side, they face this building. So.
Okay, your trees, your trees will be protected.
Yeah, the trees protect me a little bit.
Sure they will be during construction. They have all sorts of methods to make sure that they don't affect all the surrounding areas.
Like some screening up or something maybe?
I don't know what they are, but they certainly, they, they try and keep the amount of dirt and they clean the roads and everything to make sure that there isn't debris and everything on the streets to protect. I mean.
And then if you can, again, keep the underground, it would be a big help.
All right.
I know it's money, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Good, so I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Great. One more.
Uh, Bill Fieravanti, twenty-four Ray Place. Um, I'm gonna try to keep it short cause I know it's, I know you guys probably gotta go to work tomorrow. Everyone's a little tired here. I'm gonna start first that, uh, what Charlie and Pat said and, you know, this is a great building. When this building's gonna be, if this building is built, it'll probably be the best rental building in Eastchester. I mean, it's gonna look really nice. Now I understand you guys approved this building with a lot of different parameters, or with the railings and, and first of all, the green roof is probably a good thing to have because right now, when you guys drive on that hill, it's all full of trees. And, you know, it's like a little paradise over, it's a little park. Actually, that place should be a parking, should be a park for kids to play in, not a, a rental building. But I'm gonna get to another story. But when you take those trees down, you're eliminating with these storms that we're having, you know, these storms of more intensity, I don't have to say it, in the last five, ten years. Those trees, trees absorb all that rainwater. If they have a green roof on top of the building, at least that might help alleviate some of those issues with some of that rain coming down. Um, now I'm not an architect or an engineer, but you know, with a blacktop roof, I don't, I think the, the green roof would help alleviate some of those issues. Uh, secondly, the, I've lived in this area for thirty years, so I've gone, I don't know if any of you guys live in northeast Chester and Green Knolls, running that area over there, but I've gone through a couple of bad power outages. One time we had a power outage for a week and, you know, the whole area had power outages. So I went around canvassing, trying to get Con Ed, he's wrong about that. The transformer that goes for our building is on Dunwoody at the bottom of the street, not across the street on that pole. Because I actually, I actually talked him about this and they had to, you know, I had to get the guys, cause that road is hidden. Dunwoody is a little side street hidden off of Brook and from twenty-two, a lot of people don't even know about it. And when you're trying to find like in a blackout, you know, like we've had some severe blackouts a few times in that area. And, you know, sometimes it's just for a day or two, but, you know, um, I think, you know, with the, with these, with the poles, originally they were supposed to put them under, uh, Ray Place. Now you look at Ray Place right now, twenty-four Ray has no poles on the street. This is one of the highest points in Eastchester. The hill is very steep. I mean, I've seen trucks go up to the, up to the Chico's right now, which is the hottest, as Sean Kim would say, it's one of the hottest places in Eastchester, huge revenue generator for this, for the town. And I've seen a couple of times eighteen Willis slide down the street going into Brook Street. Now if you're gonna put power poles, let's say one of these poles come down and somebody's walking on, they're gonna put a sidewalk, let's say someone's electrocuted. Who's gonna be liable for that? Someone's gonna sue the town for a downed power line that electrocutes somebody coming down, walking or up, up or down the hill. I mean, across the street from those lines, what they're gonna have is a building that has, has a lot of senior people in it. They're, you know, on fixed income. A lot of those people are handicapped. What if that power line comes all the way across the street while they're trying to pull their car? Cause a lot of the people in that small building pulled their car directly out on the Brook Street. The, that power lines should not be on, on Ray Place. I'll tell you something, cause I've lived there for a long time. The winds are very strong, they're powerful. That is wrong. I've lived in the area, they don't. Secondly, the last question I wanna bring up here is, um, the, uh, uh, I won't go in the stormwater, but, uh, you know, I think you, you guys, they, they, you guys approved of a building that's gonna be, it's in Eastchester, but it has a Scarsville PO. They're kinda trying to downplay this building. But this should be like the Ritz Carlton of Eastchester if it's gonna be a rental. Originally you guys approved of a building that looks really nice. It looks, you know, I gotta give them credit. They designed a great building. But you should have, I mean, if you're gonna downsize a building and make it not a rental, at least have it in Eastchester with a Scarsville PO, make it look really appealing to other people. You know, there's other, other places people wanna rent now. Look in New Rochelle and White Plains. I mean, there's a lot of competition in, in downtown Yonkers. And the last point I'm gonna bring up here, our town supervisor has put out a letter here against the governor of what she wants to do in building multifamily units within a mile radius of the MTA. I mean, basically what he says in this letter is against what this building is stand, standing, standing for. Because once this building is approved, I assure you, there's gonna be more buildings in, in northern, northeast Chester that are gonna be built and try to be built. And I did like, and lastly, I'm gonna say, during COVID, in the height of COVID, I went around all Green Knolls on the other side of twenty-two in the height of COVID and I got two hundred signatures of people. And when they saw, heard about this building being built, they were adamantly against this whole thing. I mean, you guys did a great job tonight. I liked your, you know, your insights of how you, you know, with that last group, allowing them to express their differences about, you know, what that project was going on. But if you take all these residents that I, you know, spoke about and has talked about this building, I showed them pictures, they're a little bit appalled about this whole thing. So, um, on that issue, uh, I guess that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, can you just?
You're right. So I was thinking something the same. Okay. So we decided about the railings. We, I think. Are there any other people? I'm sorry? I think I'm gonna leave it open. Okay. So I'm just thinking, we decided about the railings, we're good. The telephone poll, I know I said I was okay with it. I wanna reconsider. So I think we all should sort of either vote on it now or think about it and come back next month and, and it is kinda true. It's not exactly.
If I might add a couple of items, just to, somewhat in response, is it possible to respond?
Yeah.
So a couple of things I think we agree. At least on one thing, we do think it's gonna be the nicest building in Eastchester. So that's great. So we got common ground. But I would point out that, uh, the picture that I showed you is from Dunwoody Street. It is from Dunwoody.
Yes.
The transformer and the utility pole that runs,
Yep.
I don't know, five or six feet from a home is to feed their, only their property.
Yeah, no, it says.
So that, that much is clear.
It says seven Dunwoody Street on it, so it's.
He, he brought up a really good point about the, uh, the runoff, right? So, uh, as a part of this project, it's a parking lot now and all that water just runs downhill. We're gonna be putting in a huge stormwater capture, uh, system in there. So the issue of stormwater runoff that did exist before has actually, uh, been heavily, uh, worked on because of this project. So that's a big upgrade from what was there before, uh, with it being just a parking lot. And, and, and understandably, you know, people are afraid of change, but I do think that, um, this building is quite lovely and it looks better than a parking lot. So the view from twenty-four Place, uh, should improve.
Ma'am, please, ma'am, you've had an opportunity to speak.
Do you, do you wanna make a few more comments, ma'am? I'm sorry? Yeah, okay. Oh, when he's done, yeah. He's gonna keep talking unless we stop him.
I, can I, can I, can I just say something very quickly? I don't wanna get, with the stormwater management's not before you, the character, the quality of the building, that you've already approved the building.
Yes.
And so it seems to me that what you've said, and, and I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Galenick who thinks some of the changes are necessarily a, um, downgrade from what, you know, they're, they're sort of, they're uh, different materials, but not necessarily cheapening the building. But so I think the really only out, it, it sounds like you're, based on the ARB recommendation, you're okay with the material changes. However, you, you also agree with the ARB that the railings should be provided. And I think the most significant issue is with regard to the, the poles. And, um, I, you know, the only thing I'd be concerned about that is sort of considering precedent for other projects and things. And I don't know if you just wanna take some time to think about that particular issue, go out and look at it at the site, et cetera. Um, but, but the other issues with regard to construction impacts or stormwater management or the height of the building, that's all been decided. So I think it's really boiling down to the utility poles right now.
Yeah.
Ma'am.
And, and there were, if I, if I could comment, there, there obviously were changes that were made. The, one of the reasons I asked about when this project started, we obviously had COVID in between. Um, it is true that the costs of a lot of materials shot through the roof. But the changes that, that, um, were initially proposed and the ones that, that it sounds like this board is ready to approve are, uh, you know, with, with the significant input of the ARB, you know, are, are, are in, in many ways very positive. I know height was, has been reduced. That's something that, um, that, that the public was clamoring for a, a few years ago. Um, I think this slate looks really terrific. Um, I think this slate looks really terrific. Um, the, the fact that we, that, that I think you've reduced the number of units
Yes.
by 14%, I mean, so it's not gonna be 21 anymore, it's gonna be 18. That's another, I, I, I would think for, for the neighborhood, uh, for the people who were concerned, you know, that reduces the, the flow of sanitary water and, and, and everything, the, the amount of parking. So, many of the changes, which, you know, maybe, you know, some of them are obviously, and you've admitted as much, um, cost motivated, um, at the same time, um, you've had to come before us and, and, and before the ARB, and, you know, we've heard you out, we've, we've explored, um, alternatives that, that still work and preserve, um, what I think is a terrific looking building. Um, so it, it seems like we're sort of down to one item, that's it. And that's the, um, the, 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 the poles and the, you know, what, how we wanna get the electrical to it.
Right, so we're gonna drive all around Eastchester and look at poles and try and decide by the next meeting.
I, I mean, so, it's just, um, if you go down 5 Ray Place at Brook Avenue, you'll note that there are a lot of utility poles connecting directly to homes at the corner of Brook and Ray. Uh, utility poles obviously leading to 24 Ray Place up Dunwoody, utility poles leading to people's houses, and so, uh, inasmuch as we're asking for similar treatment, except we're gonna do it even better, because we're gonna put the transformer on our project, and it's gonna be underground when it gets there. So it is gonna look better. Uh, Dunwoody, arguably, uh, Dunwoody is in front of somebody's home, they look out their window and they see that utility pole. These two utility poles are gonna be on 5 Ray Place, which services our building, services 24 Ray Place, services the property on the corner, services the Chico's. Uh, but those poles are going next to CVS, it's not blocking an entrance. We think we're asking, uh, what is essentially the minimal amount here, which is just an accommodation to be treated, just like other projects that are in Eastchester now.
Good, point taken. We understand, let us, uh, let us think about it.
I think you did a comment.
What's that?
I think we wanted to comment, it's a further comment.
The woman has a comment. Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm into what he says, that he thinks that the building is better than a parking lot, yeah, parking lot is not a pretty thing, but you don't see the parking lot because of that tree. So I see sunlight and anything, so you put the building up, it's gonna be worse for me from what I'm looking at. Um, the other thing is, yes, I think I know what you're talking about, the pole on Dunwoody is, but that's not in front of somebody's house.
Ma'am?
Ma'am, if you could address your comments.
Can you talk to us?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you told me.
You don't have to be sorry, just.
I'm not used to this either.
You're doing a good job, keep going.
The pole on Dunwoody is, it's just like the back, the, the way we come down our building, and there's no houses over there, it's just like, it's the, very far from the other house, and there's really no houses on that area. So, I mean, I would suggest, why don't you guys take a ride up to Ray Place? I don't know if you have before or not, you have.
Oh, go to the Chico's all the time.
That's another thing, the Chico's, uh, it's, it's a mess, it's always crowded, and this is gonna cause, uh, more of, um, backup and everything, but just, it's like, like Phil said, that's very high, so these poles are gonna be very visible. So again, I ask you to look at that. And the other thing, I just lost my train of thought, because I'm getting old and I forgot what I said. Um, but anyway, so just.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, public hearing stays open, come back next month, and we'll give you a decision.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, um, next application, should be a quick one, is 22-34 Wooden Fire, 118 Brook. God, we got three more.
Oh, sweet, my, like, Rocky Pole? It's so, it's so crazy, that area.
Lucas, we don't usually go this long. We're just dragging it out, because, yeah, we, we want, we wanna send Margaret off, like, sometime early tomorrow.
I'll stop by. We don't wanna let her go.
Just gonna keep going, April.
Again, it's the same information, the only new information, I think, is the little pole.
If you have an electronic one, that would be good, thanks, that would be good, yeah, thank you.
Godspeed. Let's do it.
Thanks, guys. Uh, Mike Farrar, uh, CEO, Wooden Fire Group, my partner Frankie Carenza. I guess we've been approved by ARB in zoning, we are going for an outdoor structure in the back of our restaurant, um, we have two at our other locations, at Wooden Fire in Pleasantville and Southern Table. We initially had came here to do the renovation, uh, and do the addition upstairs, but it just didn't make sense for us when it was all said and done, so this is our new plan. Um, how do I share?
Can you, do you have a board, or?
We do have a board, I was trying to actually show the visual.
Uh, then you need a cable.
Connected to it.
Oh, you're connected, Gary?
Gary? Do I have to, like, screen monitor? Do I have to screen, do I have to mirror it?
Just for today, just for today, because I didn't have it for the last meeting. Want me to hold it again?
Yeah. Could we do that? You have all the pictures open. Um, so it's an aluminum structure, retractable roof, louvers, so it doesn't completely open, the louvers obviously just go 180, um, and retractable sides that go all the way to the top. It's a hard plastic side, um, the structure will be equipped with infrared heat and fans, so that we could seat it all year round. This is our smallest store that we have, 50 seats, um, knock on wood, we are busy, but we, we do have a shortfall come the wintertime, you know, that's why when COVID came and we had the tent, we extended our season a little bit, uh, but we do struggle through the wintertime, because we don't have enough seats. So this will extend our seating and give us another 50 seats all year round, which having 100 seats 12 months of the year makes a huge difference for us. Uh, that's what our other stores have, that's what we need to operate. It's pretty, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty basic. The, the roof opens 180 degrees, sides open 100%, that's really what it's gonna look like, uh, it's three units put together, um, it's got a, a built-in gutter system at the top, uh, so the water drains through, and, uh, that's it. The, the louvers have a built-in J-channel as well, so, you know, in the summertime, we can get a rainstorm, uh, you know, out of the blue, we shut the roof, the rain that falls on the top, it doesn't just, you know, when it opens, it's not gonna fall on the customers, which is why we picked this unit, it works great, we can open the roof easily if the sun comes back out, the water will drain right into the J-channel, right into the drains, and, you know, tie into the rest of our gutters.
And, and you said you have this, this unit, this, um,
I have two of these.
In?
In Wooden Fire in Pleasantville. It's taken us, this was always the original store that was supposed to happen first, but it's taken us a little bit longer, um, there's a few more steps with Eastchester, which is fine.
Yep.
But we got it approved last year in November in Pleasantville for Southern Table, uh, the next month, we got it approved for Wooden Fire, we had it up and built and used by Super Bowl last year for a wedding.
And, and any issues with it?
Zero issues.
Okay.
Granted, if it's zero degrees outside,
Yep.
we're not really sitting people outside, but, you know, all winter long this year, and we've had a mild winter, but heat's on, we do a load calculation, the electrician does a load calculation for the infrared heat, we're sitting people every night, all week, you know, on, on the weekends too. And Wooden Fire in Pleasantville, it's a huge store, it's 6,000 square feet, it holds 150 people, plus the bar inside, and we're still using it outside, some people just don't wanna be inside.
Well, I know, I know, you, you guys have been before us a number of times, because you've, you've incrementally expanded. And, and each and every time, it's, it's been, you know, I, I think you guys were a godsend, you were one of the places I would go to frequently, especially during COVID, because you had the outdoor seating that we approved, and, and I, I can tell you, it wasn't a fiasco from a parking standpoint, you guys always seemed to have, have that in order, so, um.
Ballet, we do our best, you know, to, to keep it going, that, you know, we, we even went to go get a tent, I think, for this year, um, but, you know, during COVID, it was a lot easier, now it's basically the same process of what I'm doing right now, so we skipped it, you know, because it was costing us almost $700 a week in propane. It becomes a bill, you know, it becomes an expense, so, you know, this is, this is the ultimate goal, it's a $250,000 investment on our part, um, but Wooden Fire in Scarsdale's our best store as far as patio wise, because it's in the back of the building. So it's gonna match, it's a, it's a dark gray aluminum, it ties in with the building perfectly, the patio's gray, the tables are gray, so i- it all works, this was the best bet versus going upstairs.
You wouldn't consider taking that $250,000 and investing in some electrical a little bit up the road, would you?
I would do anything to, if I had it, I'd give it to them tomorrow, just to get out of here. Nobody realizes that these guys are making a huge investment in.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to nitpick at them.
I, I, I think this looks terrific.
Is it the same, I mean, I know it's just a pergola covering the existing tables, table count is.
Table count is the same, actually, believe it or not, we'll probably lose in the wintertime the perimeter tables and chairs, so if I have 60 seats right now, I'll probably have, like, 50, that's what we're counting right now, we have about 60, we'll probably end up with 50, because you have to allow for the sides to be able to go up and down in the wintertime. In the summertime, you could cheat, and you can have a table kind of,
Against them.
Against the railing, straddling in between the columns, but it's a great look, you know, i- it's not cheesy, the, the roll-down sides, it's all automated, it's in a built-in track, you know, so it's nice, it's tight, we've had a lot of wind, you know, issues, you know, we've, we've had a windier winter, no issues, we haven't had any breakage.
Yep.
They're running great, so we've been using them now for 12 months in Pleasantville.
It's, it's important to know, we're, we're not the test case here.
Yeah, no, it's two stores in, and we had it, we built it kind of quickly, because we had a wedding on Super Bowl last year at Southern Table, and, you know, it was, it worked, you know, it was, and people were happy, so.
How's the, how's the lighting work?
The lighting is, we have built-in lighting, it comes with puck lights, so in every, in those crossbeams, there's puck lights, and, you know, the fans don't come included, but this unit will probably have four to six fans, and I put lights on the fans as well, just for extra lighting. But we have our string lights too, so in the summertime, the string lights, when the roof is open, you'll have that, you know, you'll have that lit. It's like Yankee Stadium back there. Other than that, it's.
One question, who gets married on Super Bowl Sunday?
Who don't even want it, no. A lady that refuses to play the Super Bowl at the wedding, people took their food to People ask for their steak to go, because they wanted to watch the game, and we told them we couldn't put it on, because the bride didn't want it on, believe that.
All right, that's good, so let's, let's, uh, do the public hearing, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-34 Wooden Fire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adama, anything?
You're good, Adama? All right, good, and make a motion to close the public hearing on application 22-35 Wooden Fire.
Second.
Make a motion to approve application.
Wait, you have all in favor?
Neg, deck, I make a motion to.
But you have to also vote on the, uh, causing the public hearing, I seconded it, but.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Make a motion to adopt, uh, neg declaration for this application, 22-34 Wooden Fire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve, 22-34 118 Brook Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Are we, are we good at this point?
Yes, you just, no, you have to submit an application for a building permit. Yes, that, that's it, you can, you can submit that tomorrow, absolutely.
Well, you're first.
Okay, we'll look for you.
Good luck, guys.
If you wait another hour and 40 minutes, it'll be tomorrow.
I feel bad, I don't wanna have a drink.
I would've took the chicken scarf.
All right. Yeah.
The.
You want to vote, Adama?
Next, and second to last application is 22-48 5 Nancy Place.
Good evening, uh, board members, Adama Mayrono from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the owner, Nick DeSalvo, we are proposing additions and alterations to 5 Nancy Place. Uh, the applicant purchased the home a few months ago, obviously looking to create, uh, a home for their family to live in for many years, and with that, uh, the additions are mainly, uh, what we did to try to achieve, you know, the most usable space of the site. Uh, we situated the proposed two-car garage on the right-hand side of the property, it's in a dead-end street, not too many homes around, um, and it's in R75, uh, 7.5 district, but we did receive a zoning variance for this front addition, uh, the driveway, the driveway, the garage, uh, protrudes into the front yard setback, it's only like the corner of the garage, because it's an arched, uh, front, um, property line. So, basically, in the overall site design, what's gonna happen is the driveway will now turn to the right to access this two-car garage, uh, the existing garage will be removed, it'll be a playroom, and then we'll have some, uh, landscaping and, uh, some grass in front of it. Uh, basically, the new impervious surfaces, uh, overall on the site, we'll have new stormwater management, we'll have drainage facilities in the front of the house to capture some of the front area, and then drainage facilities in the rear to capture the new imperviouses in the rear. And, you know, most of really what's happening with the dwelling is the right side is being enlarged to create more livable space in the first floor, uh, kitchen area, open space, and then the, obviously, the second floor is master bedroom, additional bedrooms for the size of the family. I'll switch to the. So, basically, uh, I mean, the new design of the home, it'll pretty much take on a Tudor-style home, uh, some, a little bit of transitional elements as well, so basically, everything will be, uh, new, the windows will be Anderson, Forange series casement windows, they're in a, uh, the dark bronze finish, so basically, we're trying to mimic that color, uh, throughout with the, all of the trim and the, the soffits, uh, the AZAC will be painted that same, uh, bronze finish, the metal roof will be similar to that, uh, bronze finish, it's a, uh, aged bronze, just to give it a little contrast. Uh, the front and sides of the home, as well as the rear, is a stucco finish, it's in like a off-white color. The stone on the front, the natural thin stone veneer, it's a, uh, Concord is the name of the stone, but it's an overgrout, so basically, it'll give it a little more rustic feel as well, again, to capture that look and feel that the, uh, owners sort of want. And then, lastly, is the, uh, the roof, the roof is a architectural shingle, it's a Timberline, is part of the Harvest Collection, so it's a little different color, it has some variations to it, it's, uh, called Appalachian Sky, but it sort of looks a little bit like a slate, but it's still on a asphalt shingle roof. Um, and yeah, I think that. Yeah, the doors, front door, front door, lighting is all pretty much as depicted as well on the elevations, um.
Adama, like, I see there's a chimney in, in the, um, existing, um, does that?
No, yeah, so the chimney's gonna be removed, because that's really where the addition goes, and then they're just gonna have a gas fireplace, which, I mean, it's, it's there on the elevation, but it's in the back of the house.
Got it.
There'll be no new chimney, the utilities will be in the basement, but there'll be direct vent, so.
How is Santa gonna get in?
Was it?
How is Santa gonna get in with no chimney? I mean, you know, are you allowing for that?
They're gonna leave the window open.
Okay, got it, okay.
The casement's open big, so.
Looks good to me. This is what you do.
It's good.
It looks very good. I don't have any comments?
No comments.
It's, it's quite a, uh, you, it's a very, um, nondescript home right now, and it's certainly.
Some of those homes in that area have, you know, gone under renovations, but some have that similar sort of, you know.
It's not unattractive, but nondescript is probably the best word for it, and you, you're, you're, you're proposing something really beautiful, so.
Thank you.
Looks good to me. Yeah, definitely an enhancement for the neighborhood, for sure. I live in the neighborhood, so, good job.
I just looked it up, your name came up right next to it.
Although it's at the dead end, so no, we really.
Yeah.
Brings up the character of the neighborhood.
Totally.
So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-48 Five Nancy Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing, the same application, 22-48 Five Nancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve this application, 22-48 Five Nancy Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Ready? Thank you.
Next application tonight is 23-10 16 Greystone Circle.
Okay, so, yeah, Adamo Maiarano, again, Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, Lisa DeFeo, we are proposing a new dwelling at 16 Greystone Circle. Just to give quickly a little background, so this entire project was part of a subdivision that you guys approved a couple of years ago, it was 20 Greystone Circle with this parcel next to it. So we did propose a single-family home similar to this, just almost a year ago that you guys approved. The new owner sold the property to an actual, you know, homeowner that wants to build the home for themselves, so they wanted to do changes, so we're here proposing, basically in a nutshell, a new home. But just to give an idea, everything on the site stays exactly the same as what was approved before, it's mainly the aesthetics that changed throughout the home. But just to go through a little bit of the, I guess, site again, I mean, the site slopes from the front to back, so with that, basically, it's, you know, very low to the front elevation, front streetscape, and then the back of the house is sort of, you know, there's like a deck and a walkout to the basement, and then there's a retaining wall, just like a three-foot-high retaining wall, to get a little bit of a higher grade back there in the far back. And that's where a lot of the stormwater management has since been approved, but there's a lot of drainage back there, and, you know, due to just the soil and all that stuff, so that's where a lot of our drainage facilities will be located, and then we are, have some of it concentrated to the front as well. But, yeah, your basic features, the home driveway on the left-hand side, two-car garage, and then, yeah, new landscape plan and all that stuff, but I'll just go through the. Elevation. So, yeah, the idea of the, you know, house, it's pretty specific to the homeowner, so they really wanted this brick finish, but basically, it's a white brick with, you know, the same sort of colored grout, so it almost looks like painted brick. Basically, there's an archway at the front double door, they wanted, you know, make the entry a little more dominant in this house, so it sort of symbolized with that, you know, front entry. All of the windows are a black finish on this house, they're casement windows as well. Then the rest of the house is just a regular lap hardy plank siding, it's on a white finish as well. The AZAC trim and all of that is just your standard white AZAC trim. The front metal roofing is in a charcoal color, and the asphalt shingle roof is, again, in a charcoal color. Garage door, same thing with the double doors, they're in a black finish as well, and, I'm pretty much.
Nice chimney.
There is the.
Yeah, okay.
This does have a real chimney. Same to match the front of the home. And landscape plan, not, yeah, it's the original landscape plan, that was before you, before one of the same sort of.
Yeah, the notes that Margaret gave us reflect that the building footprint and the impervious surface coverage haven't changed since the prior application, right?
Exactly, yeah.
So it's really, and all the same wastewater management runoff is in place, right?
Exactly.
So you said there was a landscape plan in place previously, and it stays as it was?
And they're using the same one, yeah.
Again, very handsome, all the comments, I like it.
Yep.
Same here.
So then.
Likewise.
It's unanimous, we all like it. So I make a, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22, 23-10 16 Greystone Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing on the same application, 23-10 16 Greystone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to, I'm just going to run through the condition about landscape. So prior to issuance of CO, the landscape architect shall provide a sign and seal letter to building and planning certifying that the landscape plan has been installed in accordance with approved plans. Any proposed changes to the plan shall be reviewed by the landscape architect approved by the building and planning department prior to installation, and shall be documented in a letter submitted by the landscape architect. So, subject to that condition, I make a motion to approve this application, 23-10 16 Greystone Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Not to take up any more of the board's time, but I think we owe, you know, Margaret a huge thank you, and I guess this is your last planning board, me, I feel honored to, I guess, be the last one to present, but.
Last two.
There you go.
I did that on purpose, Adamo, so.
There you go.
Just the last one.
Totally, truly, you know, thank you for your time. Not just me, other architects, homeowners, engineers in town, truly appreciate, you know, what you've devoted all your time to, you know, us and everybody, and then, you know, not even just your time, you know, here, but after hours, making this town a better place to live in and beautifying it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So kind of you to say that.
And I want to add to that, that I've now been on this board, I guess this is my, probably my 14th year on the board, I started at the beginning of 2010, and I have to say, it's just been a joy working with you, and you've always been so giving of your time, so gracious with all of us. You've always been there to answer whatever question we've had on this, and I know you've had the same approach to the, to the people of this town, you've been a terrific resource to this town, and we're all going to miss you very much.
Thank you so much for saying that.
Of course.
Yes, the whole town is going to miss you, Margaret.
Well, and I've always said, I've been very lucky with the board members that I've worked with, every single one of you, except for the meetings being long, they're actually kind of fun.
Try and keep it light.
Pretty long, yeah, especially leaving the time that we got some big projects coming on too, so.
I know.
Just in time.
Good timing.
Well, we've got, we've got the new guy, Lucas.
So guys, I'm going to close, I'm going to close the meeting, we're still open here, so I make a motion to adjourn the March 23, 2023 planning board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a wrap.
Thank you.